Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our work session. We are joined at the board table tonight by a member of our Interest City Student Council. Would you like to please introduce yourselves?
Hello. Yes, just me. Um, hi, my name is Viva Winkler. I'm a senior over at Southwest and I'm the president of Interest City Student Council.
Thank you. Can we, um, Kinsey, can we do the roll call, please?
Becker.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Lyerly.
Here.
Mills.
Here.
Here.
Frostin.
Here.
Lee.
I'm going to assume that Mr. Lee will be joining us. I haven't heard from him today. Is anyone? Okay. We'll just make note of it when he does join. So, okay. Um, next on the agenda is our recognition. I think we're going to be joined by some folks that are, yeah, in the room. They're there. Come on up, guys. Tell us all about your work. Would you introduce yourselves first, though, please?
I'm Tara Breckner. I'm work experience teacher at West High School.
I'm Kim Deemer. I'm the Southwest Work Experience Teacher.
I'm Shane McDonough, the Work Experience Coordinator at Green Bay East High School.
And I'm Wanda Bronsted from Preble High School Work Experience.
Okay, well, welcome. I think you have a slideshow and are you gonna just walk us through this? Please.
So I have the important task of actually explaining what work experience is. It's a little harder than what most think because most people don't actually know that we exist in a lot of different areas, but we're actually really alive and thriving. So I hope I can explain this well, but it's, I only got like three sentences, so. Work experience is a class that allows students with special needs to earn a credit by working in the community. Work experience teaches students how to navigate work by helping them obtain and keep a job in the community. This would include developing community partnerships, willing to hire our students, find and train students that need transportation, writing a resume, cover letters, references, and interviewing. We also assist with on-the-job training that helps develop skills, such as, but not limited to, punctuality, attendance, hygiene, attitude, coworkers' relationships, customer service, quality and quantity of work, as well as safety. All skills that we do teach and try to hone. They're measured by our career community transition readiness evaluation.
And one of the really most jobs is really connecting to our community services and we just want to have a seamless transition for our students when they leave us. There are students, we see them at sixteen, seventeen, eighteen in the high school, but then we have the job of carrying that on into their transition years, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. And so at that stage, we want to make sure these students are connected to DVR and ADRC. Those are the two main ones, but on top of that, we are doing so much more with these students and these families to make sure that, you know, do they have housing once they leave us? Do they need food share? Where are, where are their needs as a student, as a worker, as a part of our community in Green Bay? What can we do to help them? That might look like going to the homeless shelter for transitional housing. That might look like setting up an appointment for food share. So there's so many different parts and pieces that bridge us together and bridge us to our community, which we have so many amazing services.
So I just wanted to share out, this is an alumni spotlight. This is Jeremy. He was a student in my program. He was with me for about six years. He and I began with some interest inventories that turned into job shadows, a few business tours. And then he started employment. We were out and we started four hours a week and then we expanded that. We tried something else and he got connected to DVR and he detailed cars at Doris Ford. And eventually, in his final year, he said, "Mr. Mack, I want to work at Walgreens." I said, "Great." I went and I spoke to the manager at Walgreens and they offered him an opportunity in partnership with DVR to give him access into a job, which he has kept. And I went back and I visited with Jeremy last week and he agreed to participate in this short video. So here we go.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Kibbit. I'm from Green Bay East High School, graduated in 2019. I did the work experience for six years with Shane McDonough. Kept, had this job, helped me here, so I kept this off. Here I am today.
And I'm Dustin Bravy. I'm a store manager here at Walgreens. Jeremy's been with us longer than I've been employed at the store, actually. And Jeremy is very reliable, he's here on time, he knows what he needs to do without being asked. He gets his stuff done and he gets his stuff done very well.
So.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Kibbit. I'm from.
So, you know, one of the things I asked Jeremy after we shot that short video, I said, "Do you have any advice for the current students in the program?" And Jeremy just said, "Work hard, show up when you're scheduled to work, and the rest will take care of itself." And it's a, it's a great honor to serve the students and families in this program and to serve with these three fine educators next to me. And so I don't know, I get a bit emotional when I see students who are showing and demonstrating success. He's just a great human being. He was recognized by the Green Bay Packers for his acts of kindness and his volunteerism in our community. He's just, he's just an outstanding citizen. So, on to, yes, sir.
When he said his name, Jeremy was across the hall from me when I taught at Washington. So I was thrilled to see that and not surprised at all with what you were just saying about it. Just a great young man there, too. So fantastic.
So when we look at, oh, there we go. I can actually describe it. We can go forward to, to the next slide. Yep.
Jeremy, do you have any advice for current work experience students?
We're gonna go on to indicator fourteen. So, a bit about indicator fourteen, what is it defining it? Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction has let us, the definition they use is that it helps us describe the further education and competitive employment experiences of youth with disabilities as they transition from high school and do adult life out in the community. As part of the Wisconsin State Performance Plan, it requires states to report an unduplicated count of the following. Percentage of youth who are no longer in secondary school had IEPs in effect at the time that they left school and were A, enrolled in higher education within one year of leaving school, B, enrolled in higher education or competitively employed within one year of leaving school, or C, enrolled in higher education or in some other post-secondary education or training, or competitively employed in some other employment within one year of leaving high school. So, as we share this data, again, I just want everyone to be aware that, you know, numbers don't tell the whole story. One of the things that I, I'm so proud of the fact that we do here in Green Bay is that we educate children. And I think that's very important. And I think it sends an important message. So when you look at this data, if you choose to, just keep that in mind. We serve, and most of the students in our program have developmental disabilities, meaning they're connected to community resources, specifically long-term care supports, in most cases after they leave us. And as part of still qualifying for those long-term care supports, they are only allowed to work a certain number of hours per week. So even though some of our data says, "Well, we're not meeting the state average," Shane, when it related to competitive employment, I would just caution anyone looking at those numbers, look at the whole picture. And I think that we do an admirable job of serving students. And I think actually, we want to look at number four, other employment. We are beating the state average by nearly five and a half percent. And I think that you'll, you'll see that that reflects in the work that we're doing and that also reflects in the mission and the vision that we have as a district to serve all students and educate all children. If you really want to go down the rabbit hole, I've shared two other slides here, or one other slide, talking about how we're stacking up versus the state averages specifically for students with intellectual disabilities and our students with autism. And I think the takeaway, the capture from all this data is that we are demonstrating that the work that we're doing is improving outcomes for children with dys-
So one of our goals is to show students that work can be fun. And we provide our students with multiple experiences so that they can get an idea of what work looks like in different environments. And so this slide is some of the business tours that we have taken. And then, go ahead. And then we do take this, the city bus. The kids really enjoy taking the city bus. And, you know, many cities and towns around us don't have a city bus or a transportation is actually a barrier because they don't have as much as we do. So we're very thankful for this option in Green Bay to increase the independence of our students. They can go out to work without relying on a family member or somebody to take them to work. They can just learn how to ride on their own and get there. And community, community integration is an important piece of work experience as well because it helps the students to connect with other activities in our community and enhances the social interactions and inclusive environment. And we all know that work isn't just the only part of our day. We have to enjoy other parts of the day, too, to feel like work is meaningful as well, in my opinion. And I just wanted to say that we all appreciate this opportunity to share what work experience is. And we want to leave you with this nice little slideshow of our students in action while they're on the job.
Working for a bad picking what they're getting because I'm working for a living.
Thank you very much. And we're wondering if you have any questions for us.
Go ahead, Lynn.
I have a question, but first of all, I wanted to make a comment. I've been on this board for a year. I came here with no background in this district, no understanding of the public schools here. And every single week, I find out something else amazing about this school district. I had no idea this, this existed. I see these kids like bagging my groceries perhaps or something like that. I had no idea. And I just, I think it's just absolutely wonderful. And my question is, what do you, how do you prepare to be a teacher of this program? What is, what are your backgrounds?
I went to UW-Stout for a vocational rehabilitation degree with a certificate in special education and I got my license from that. I also have my master's degree from UW-Locust and professional development. And I later on earned another certificate in trans, for transition specialist from UW-Whitewater.
I think this position requires a lot of creative thinking and outside-the-box thinking to expand opportunities for the students and families we serve. My undergraduate degree is actually music performance. And I became a special education teacher once we found out that my eldest boy was experiencing some developmental delay. So I chose to go get a master's degree in special education. And my background prior to being an educator, I was an actor, singer, but I was also, go figure, a bartender and a waiter and everything else in hospitality, right? So, you know, worked my way into hotel management, things like that. So I had some prior professional experience before becoming an educator. And then I had some administrators who I interviewed with who believed in me and gave me the opportunity.
So I'm kind of the trick-of-all-trades, master of none. So I actually got my Bachelor's of Arts in Communications. I worked for numerous different companies. I worked in Milwaukee in a children's binding company. I then worked for fifteen years at Oneida as their recreation and special event coordinator. And then, sort of similar to Shane, my kids said, "I want you home" versus working at night. So I applied at the Green Bay School Districts and became a para for six years and landed a para as a work experience teacher. During that time, I went back and got certified and applied when the additional teacher retired.
So I started my career here in Green Bay twenty-two years ago and started out in regular ed elementary, Howe Elementary, then Chapel Elementary, regular ed. And I went back and got my master's in ant-risk education and came back for high school. So.
Can I also add that you don't need to have a college degree to be in the work experience program. We do have wonderful para professionals who work with us. We could not do this job without them. They are doing all the things that we are doing as well. So I wanted to thank our para professionals, too.
Anybody else? Rick?
Just to commend you on the work that you're doing, I always ask the question, "How do you make the great thing that you're doing even better?" In the way of resources or support or help or anything that anyone can do to make this great thing even better?
I would say, you know, before the school year even starts, we are out during the summer and asking businesses, you know, "What are your unmet needs? Where can we fill a position? What do you need?" And it's really by word of mouth. It's really by who you know and who you meet. And sometimes, you know, you go to a business two or three years and finally they have a spot. And I think, you know, it's just building these relationships. And if, if you know anyone in business that has some unmet needs that our students here in Green Bay could could take part in, we, we would absolutely find a student that, that would meet those needs. And I think that would make it easier as a team.
James, did you have something? No? Okay. Brian?
I just wanted, for watching that, I was noticing, I started writing down all the community support that we have and then you just see it's what makes Green Bay, Green Bay, whether it's, you know, the Green Bay Metro or the ADRC. I see some people from DVR back there, I think, and I know ADRC back there that work with us, you know, and just, just help our students out so much. And then all the employers are like a who's who of Brown County and are doing great work here. So I think we should probably recognize the people there, back there with them, that are trying to hide right now. No one else? Okay, I thought I was seeing more people, but I guess I'm wrong. But my question for you on that is, it's not really a question, it's a statement, but I'm gonna let you answer it. We start planning for this in middle school, too, correct? When they're going through with their transition statements. So when a student has an IEP at fourteen, that's when the planning starts working with it as well. So, and mostly the students are receiving services through twenty-one, I believe, correct? So when you think of a traditional setup for students that are receiving the services, at eighteen, we don't, we don't leave them. You know, we continue as a school district to help provide those services to then get them to the next step within the community that's helping them out. So thank you to all, what you're doing and to the middle school teachers before that and to the community that's stepping up after. We do great stuff and it was, it was a thrill to see a couple former students in that. So, thank you.
My apology, I was, I missed the first part of your presentation or, but I want to commend you and the program. You know, I grew up in a very tough environment, the other side of the world in Detroit. And I have known families that have kids, children that are special need. And I know how stressful that could be. But seeing this, I think that it's true that everybody brings value to the table. Not just the very academic gifted students, but everybody brings value to the table. And hearing this story, watching these pictures, you know, we can see the sprinkles of how America is, the melting pots, how they used to say in the eighties, which is true here in Green Bay. And I, again, you know, reemphasizing the point that I am a big cheerleader for your team. If there's anything that we could do to help the program more successful than what it is, I'm all for that. And I think this is great. And thank you so much for everything you do.
Go ahead, Lynn.
I promise, this is just a quick question. You listed so many companies and businesses. You showed pictures of kids working there, but there were so many listed. I have to ask you, does someone from GBAPS have relationship with each one of them? Like, I mean, is this just where the kids happen to get a job or does somebody actually work with every single one of those businesses?
Yes, we, as a team, are individually, we, we talk with every employer, every student that goes in, most of the time is supported with us either one-on-one or, which would actually bring up the whole point of if there was more, more of us, more, then we could serve more kids. Each of our caseloads are quite high. And like was stated before, it's not possible without the paras that we have with us. But yes, each individual community partner has a relationship with either one of us. They do, they have a relationship with each one of us.
Yeah, and to double down on that statement, you know, I, I think when you look at the statement, what does an organization value, what they fund? And I'm not here to slight anyone else in our community or who lives in the surrounding areas, but by having us and funding our positions, that's, that's a huge first step. Yeah, if we could be cloned and duplicated, wonderful. I, I, you know, that, if we could get more of us out doing this work, that would be, that would be fantastic.
Anybody else? I, I think this is a really good example of how our district is embedded into our community in ways that continue to surprise me. I mean, I knew, I knew this work was happening, but I, you know, this is, this is illustrates it so much better than, than I ever even imagined. And and our district and programs like this affect our local economy. I mean, these, these students will pay taxes. They will, they will be full citizens of our community in a way that is going to benefit all of us, is benefiting all of us. So I, um, and I just want to thank Lynn for mentioning, having you guys all talk about your credentials and what you bring to the table. I find that personally fascinating because I, I don't know all of you and, and I, I just like knowing you know, how, how you got here, right? How you got here? Okay, just a second. Um, and then finally, one of you said something about educating all children. Excuse me. We talk about that. Sometimes we don't pause to think about what that really fully means. But here you are, showing exactly what it means. So I just want to thank you for coming today. And Brian, you're next.
It's just kind of building off that, the, the amount of empathy that our other students recognize in the buildings is amazing because I hear about it. I hear about it from my kids that go to high school at one of, at one of the schools and I hear from other students that see this on a regular basis and just, you know, that, that's also building within our community of this, this is the life lessons, not just for the students that are receiving the services with their IEPs, but every student that interacts with them and just recognizes when I go to work, I'm going to be working with different people of different abilities. And when I'm in the community, I'm going to be interacting with them. So this clearly doesn't just benefit our, the students receiving the services. It's throughout the district and you guys are doing a great job. So thank you.
I hope we can make this, um, maybe come back a little more often. And just, just to remind us, right, of the, of the amazing work that happens in our district every day. So, thank you very much. Okay, um, next is our public forum. Was there anyone in the audience who wanted to speak? If there is, you need to fill out the forum and give it to Kinsey. But it looks like there isn't anybody, so we're going to move on to our next, um, our next is under education. And I'm going to hand that off to Vicky Byer.
Okay, we can have Dan and the team come on up. We wanted to use this opportunity to provide the Board of Education with an update on the work that's been happening to consolidate three of our schools, actually, six of our schools through this process. Jess, why don't we start with you and just do quick introductions, please?
Jess Melkor, one of the directors of elementary schools.
Adam Lovett is principal at Lincoln and Katherine Johnson Academy.
Dan Sloy, director of secondary education.
Willie Brickell is principal at Red Smith School.
And Shayna Pochask, elementary director.
And I believe we have Week We Are on, right? Joanna?
Yeah, Joanna Wheaton, admin intern out at Week We Are.
And we also have Chad Jensen, director of transportation, available in case you have questions specific to that. Turn it over to you guys.
Thank you. So we have our slideshow. If you want to begin that, Kinsey, thank you. We'll begin with letting you know how incredibly proud our team- We'll begin with letting you know how incredibly proud our team is with the collaboration. The collaboration amongst everyone. The entire year, if there ever was a question or a support needed brought forward by parents or brought forward by our teachers or our principals, we could immediately work with teammates. If it was H R, it was facilities, transportation, budgeting, whatever it was, the need was met. And our slideshow and our presentation will hopefully illustrate some of those ways that we have supported. And it's really been through a lens of caring, making sure that we listen first to those needs. And then wherever we can possibly be flexible to meet those needs. And so you'll see how we have customized things. We've done things differently and in new ways based on feedback we've heard from staff transitioning or from parents that were seeking out information. So you're gonna see that highlighted in these slides. So we'll begin with staffing. Right now, all classroom and support staff in all three of our consolidating schools have their placements for next year. We've also had opportunities for them to join professional learning. So for example, when Kennedy was learning around inclusive practices, they brought over the Keller teachers to be involved. We've also have new administrative placements. Just last week, we were able to secure a brand-new position of an associate principal at Kennedy. We will also be finishing up the placement of the principals in the next two weeks. All right, next, enrollment and communication. So it was very important for us to make sure that our families were, and students were taken care of through this transition. Thank you. So, um, to date, all of our students are enrolled in Infinite Campus in their respective homeschool. And through that process, we had students who were intra-district to the consolidating school and out of that school. So it was important for us to connect with families that had potentially been gone to other schools as well to know, for them to know that they are, were welcome to go to the new, the new school as well, should they choose to. So we made those personal connections by, by way of phone calls. The Keller team did an amazing job by visiting, um, all the homes of their Afghan families to clarify programming and placement. They brought along maps of, hey, here's where your homeschool would be. Here's, you know, the consolidating school or the school that you would be consolidating into and looking at transportation needs and really wanted to make sure everyone landed exactly where they wished to, to go. So it was a collective, collective effort. I believe Chad, Chad, are you gonna talk about transportation?
Yes, good evening. Um, just to go over this real quickly, we have been working with all the schools and families, as mentioned, to identify what has changed. And we are feeling very comfortable. We've got next year's route set, prepared. So when we prepare this summer, the new routes, the students will be into there. So central registration will have the appropriate schools listed for the students and we'll get them on the buses. And we continue to answer questions as they arise. So, thank you.
I'll speak a little bit on the facilities. Over the, over the last months, we've, our interdepartment district planning has taken place in coordinating of the movement. Title I, legal technology, facilities and school leadership teammates have all made onsite visits at each of the locations. We've also, on a regular basis, monthly, we've had meetings with senior leadership, leadership to track the progress, plan for potential budget needs that were seen or unforeseen and develop support for staff and families. Each school was prioritized with new or updated furniture and spa, in the spaces allocated. Moving details are secured. I met with Willie this morning and some of that new furniture is already arriving at Red Smith to support those students coming over. And then also physical renovations in many areas are already underway.
All right, updates at Kennedy. So we've got a lot of moving pieces at Kennedy. The first being that the gym stage has been removed and they're revamping the kitchen. So we're prepared for a wonderful flow of lunch. Building an art room that'll take place after the school year ends. Building a space for student learning advocate, relocating a bookroom, adding doors between classrooms for their co-teaching, co-serving model, moving several classrooms, adding walls between rooms to make more office spaces, turning storage spaces into office spacious, spaces and improve school signage inside and outside. So that way, when our families come in, they know exactly where they're going and with real nice labeling and branding done as well for the school Wildcats.
All right, updates at Lincoln. So we have worked to put some cones out and to adjust some of our traffic flow. Also make sure to make sure we communicated that with all of our families to kind of, you know, make sure we're good stewards of the community. Along with that, we have the new space for Katherine Johnson Learning Academy, which is kind of adding to the overall area. We are moving classrooms and adding walls to create a new four K learning space. We have addition of audiovisual equipment in the gym and the cafeteria. Every classroom is gonna have a smart board. Uh, well, that will be on carts. We're pretty close now, but we'll make sure almost everyone does. We are going to then also update some digital signage within the school. So when families come in, they'll have different digital signage that they'll see what's going on. And then the last other big exciting thing is that we'll have a new school sign out front, right on Chano Avenue.
Some updates at Red Smith. Again, we're fortunate in 2020 to have some updates to our building and add eight additional classrooms. Therefore, that's given us some flexibility over the years to do so. Also fortunate to have had a partnership with both Baird Elementary and Wicquiao Elementary over the years as we transition their fifth graders, along with our fifth graders into sixth grades. There have been some natural partnerships in the past that made this transition a little bit easier. And we certainly don't want to forget about the integrity behind the students that are transitioning from Wicquiao to us in grades kindergarten through fourth. And so Joanna and I have had several conversations along the way between us before sharing information out with our staff or asking the right questions of our learning community, meaning students and families, to understand how to make this the smoothest transition that we can. So Joanna's been a great learning partner for me to be able to make this happen. So with that said, some of the things that we've both explored over the last, really, year to a year and a half has been what are those things that are happening at Wicquiao School that we want to, again, keep that philosophy of what's good for one student may be good for many, many more students. And so we've, uh, we've asked the students and we've asked their families, what should we bring along with? Some of those things are those learning experiences, both internally around environmental science, but also externally and, and getting our hands dirty and getting out in the environment. So a piece of that is having a six-eight egg science program already in place. There are different standards between environmental science and egg science. And we don't certainly want to confuse those, but yet there is some intertwine that happens between those. So we've had conversations with teachers at the building level, both Wicquiao teachers and Red Smith teachers, about what that could look like. So we haven't had a greenhouse in the past. We utilize two classrooms currently inside the building to be able to make that six-eight egg science program function. We've added some, we've added some ex, exterior features to be able to facilitate some equipment outside in terms of a new shed to store things. But we have requested a new greenhouse be put on site to be able to continue some of those awesome learning experiences that happen for our neighbors to the north. Additionally, an outdoor learning pavilion, again, that'll be access K eight for all of our students. And then one of the cool features at Wicquiao, right, is some of that true outdoor learning with a chicken coop and facilitating that. So we're happily gonna move that chicken coop to Red Smith School this summer. And yeah, we'll continue that awesome tradition. In addition, you see in some of the slides here, the photographs of the kids enjoying up at Wicquiao their new playground equipment. So with the addition of some, some students, we too had some new playground equipment last summer, but certainly in need for more to expand that outdoor learning space for those kids. So we're gonna bring down some of those pieces that are important to kids at Wicquiao and include them amongst our outdoor equipment at Ritz.
So in a moment here, we'll pause for some questions. But so far, you can see already that the students and staff will have greater access because they're a larger community. They're gonna have more partners that are thinking partners, more people to collaborate with. That is a bigger family that can support social, emotional and academic needs. They'll have more friend groups. In a single-track school, you're limited as to how you can mix up the students. So being in a larger school provides more of that community and more opportunities. As you saw in those presentations of slides, lots of improvements to facilities. So we are improving their opportunities in their structures and in their academic programming and in their family group, their community. So let's take a moment to pause for what questions you may have so far.
I don't know if this is necessarily the right question for you guys to be answering or anybody else. But as these transitions are being made, are students being made aware that there are counselors at their schools that they can speak to if they're, like, if they have any questions about what's happening? Or they're sad about what's happening? Or they're anxious? Are they aware that there is someone at their school that they can speak to? And also are the counselors or people that they can speak to prepared to answer those questions?
That, that is an excellent question. And I could speak for Joanna. I know Joanna, you're on, but I know that you've done a wonderful job at your school of making sure that your staff, students and families are prepared and you're celebrating this last year, but making sure they have everything they need for the smoothest transition possible. And I don't know if you want to speak on that, but there's been a lot of work done to make sure that all needs are being met for all of our students and families. Because you're right, it is a big shift for many of them. Thank you for the question. I don't know, Joanna, if you want to speak on that at all, but...
I can speak just a little bit. Um, as for the counselors, we do have a school counselor that's in the building a few times a week. She found at the beginning of the year that the kids really had a lot of anxiety and questions. She was meeting with students quite a bit. But through the year, I think the more that they've heard about the transition, the more that we've been as a staff positive about the transition, I think that has really helped. Last week, when we went to visit Red Smith, the students were all excited. A little, you know, there were a few little nerves. Of course, there's going to be. But overall, I, I believe that the leadership from the, the staff as a whole, um, the, the students, they did okay with it. So we will continue to have our school counselor there for kids. But I, I really think it's our staff as a whole that has shown the kids that transition's going to be okay. And so that's really helped.
That was a great question. And I don't know if you caught how often the counselors at Wicquiao. They'll have access every day now. And that's, that's huge.
That is a big change.
Right. And another point to attribute to the leaders at Tank, Wicquiao and Keller, students respond to the way adults respond. So when they see adults accepting, even though it's hard, accepting and getting kids excited about the transition, they'll react in the same way.
I'd like to add that behind the scenes, the staff are doing a marvelous job as well with preparing. So for example, I know that the student service team from Tank intentionally is meeting with the student service team from Lincoln. They've done that on a couple occasions. They have some more plans. So they can talk to each other about students and make sure they're supported and know each other well.
First of all, I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm just, I'm so pleased with the, the way you're doing this. We are writing the first chapter of this big challenge. And you are writing it from a positive perspective and you're making it a good story. We need to tell this story loud and clear because I always knew you could do it. And now you've proved that you are doing it. I have a quick question. Did you say that Catherine Johnson Academy is going to be getting more space and is going to be expanding? I maybe didn't understand.
No, it will not be getting more space. It will stay where it is while, even though Tank is coming through. We are expanding with students, but our space is not expanding. Sorry.
Okay. Does that, is that the end of your, oh, okay.
We have much more good stuff to stay. I mean, you stay till ten, right? I'm sure.
Sometimes later.
Yeah, if we, oh, next slide.
All right. So, oh, sorry. Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, just as we talk about the startup.
There we go. Just as we talk about the startup next year, and I think we just kind of eased into that a little bit. Plans are under, underway for a successful start of the new school year. I know the last bullet you'll see Chad was on earlier. We've really been focused on reviewing those traffic patterns. That's a key piece to our families feeling really good that for, those first few days, how do we drop off? And how do we make that successful? Knowing as a leader of a building, more parents drop off on those first two or three days than any other throughout the school year. So we really have to be prepared and communication has already been happening with our schools as students are coming over and talking about those patterns with our families. Also, the second bullet there, it kind of went out of order, but the second bullet just talks about our, our volunteer and community partner coordinator and district staff will support Red Smith, Lincoln and Kennedy with additional volunteers for those first days at school. So that can go as smoothly as possible for our families and our students.
All right, next, the community building. I got excited because this isn't a, this is a fun part of, of the consolidation is growing the relationships. You were your question earlier about some of those feelings. Some of those anxiousness and feelings of uneasiness comes from just the unknown. So our, our schools have done a fabulous job of setting up conditions for some of that community building. So the next slide, uh, Kinsey here is Keller and Kennedy, beginning in January and through February, had pen pals. So each of the kids had a pen pal from each other's school. And they didn't get to meet each other until in March. And in March, the kids came over from Keller to Kennedy, got to walk through the schools, got to meet their pen pals. And they made these awesome bracelets. You can see the colors there represent the two schools coming together with a little paw print. And the energy was so incredible. The smiles, there was so much excitement coming from the kids. It was just super heartwarming. So, so that's just one of the things that Keller and Kennedy did to start to build that. And now the kids can start to envision like, now I can see, I made friends. They, you know, they made friends that they're looking forward to seeing in fall. So.
Whoever made that poster? That is a very clever poster. Was it any of you by any chance? No, probably maybe the teacher? Okay. Yeah, that's some upper-level poster making.
Yeah, so again, Joanna and I, in collaboration with some of our staff and parents from our neighbors to the north, have talked about what would be some of those things that some of our families need to experience before they can settle into this transition and feel some comfort. So again, we, we've invited Wicquiao families to join our P T O. And we've had some of those representatives the last several months start to attend our meetings. We had two events last week, one being on the eighth, the evening of the eighth, bringing Wicquiao families over to Red Smith for a welcome tour of the building and a little bit of a Q and A. So Joanna and I put together a little presentation to share some of those things logistically about how our building operates and the physical size of the building and the feel are two quite different things. So you could see some of the families take ease in that after they understood the logistics of, we have, you know, two traditional sides of our building in elementary in the middle and, and not a whole bunch of interaction unless it's intentional buddy work, which we're also proud of. So the following day, we brought students over, kindergarten through fifth graders, to spend three hours roughly with our, our students at Red Smith. And again, there was some... And again, there were some community building activities that took place. We had our teachers prep for that. Again, Wikwak teachers did a great job of coming over, joining in. We divided our students, the Wikwak students, up into all of our classrooms by grade level, and they spent three hours in the building to see what that would look and feel like. And again, Joanna had mentioned earlier, there's butterflies and there's anxiety. But many of them have had older siblings over the years also transition. And so there's a good amount of students and families that have familiarity with our building already. So there was more excitement by the end of that evening and day than there was anxiety, I think. And so they continue to ask great questions, and I continue to receive, as does Joanna, some emails from parents. And we've encouraged them, keep asking questions. The building is going to continue to be open for you as we move towards the transition in June. So again, just some photos of families walking around, checking it out, and student excitement.
And I think too, some of that community building, we've been trying to do at Wikwak just to make sure the kids are, it's staying on their mind. We've been adding things to our announcements about Red Smith. This past week, I put in my video, Jenna has shared the AP over at Red Smith. She had shared some of the Rory the Raptor videos. So I've been embedding those in the videos that I share with my students every week, the Wikwak, so they can see the Raptors. And I think the big thing too is I made sure to follow up with the group of kids afterwards. We had a school-wide community circle that afternoon after the visit. We broke the kids into little groups so they could cross-grade level, have some conversations and talk about some of the neat things they saw, some of the things that they were excited about. So I gave them about seven minutes just to talk. And then we all got together and I just had them share like, what are some really awesome things that they noticed about Red Smith? And then we had an awesome, and then we had a yeah but, or a different but, I think they called it. And we, that category was really, there are things that are different, but it's going to be okay category. And then we had a, one of the staff members at Wikwak, she has a child that's gone through Red Smith. So she came over in the afternoon then to answer some questions, which I think was really helpful. We just kind of let her and the kids talk, and she really, at a student level, was able to kind of get down at the kids' level and really talk to them about just some of the last-minute questions that they had about Red Smith. So, and then I followed up the slideshow that Willie shared at the parent meeting that's going out to all of the Wikwak families tomorrow for anyone that may have missed the meeting. So just to follow up with parents as well.
So we have a few more events coming. Tomorrow, we welcome, again, bear fifth grade, Wikwak fifth grade for our Raptor Ready. Welcome to sixth grade orientation. So we'll have our avid students leading that out tomorrow for three hours, another cool experience and exposure to the building. Then on May 24th, specific to staff for professional development, right? Cross-grade level conversation is really important. So Wikwak staff's going to join their new collaborative learning teams at our building. And we're going to have some of those critical conversations about how to bridge this year's learning into next. And then Wikwak staff's going to stay with ours. We're going to have a picnic in the middle of the day. June 6th is our Red Smith PTO roaring into summer event. It's a carnival. And so that's a fun run and some carnival activities hosted by the PTO. And we have Wikwak families signing up for that already. So again, it's a community learning and building environment that we're trying to provide as we keep asking questions about, yeah, acknowledging the challenge, but appreciating the opportunity ahead of us.
All right, for Lincoln and Tank, we did start back in fall, where we did initially open up and did a family night for all Tank staff. We had our staff stay, and then Tank families were able to come, and we gave them all tours, knowing that that was kind of that initial, right when that was all announced. Just last week, we actually, for our after-school program, Tank's after-school program came over. And then our after-school program students gave all the Tank students that tour. It was really kind of cool because we've done summer school together. There was so much recognition between the students and the staff. So you'd go around like, hey, I see you, I remember you. So that was really nice because we've done a lot of partnerships in the past. Moving forward, May 30th, we are going to be during the day having Tank students come over, and then we have a variety of different activities planned, where our students and Tank students, grade-level cohorts, will be working together and doing different activities, some team building, some to kind of get to learn the school. And then later that night, we will be doing a family event with both Lincoln and Tank families, where they will come together and kind of learn about the school and do some activities as well. And then Tank will have a family picnic on June 7th that admin from Lincoln are invited.
All right, and Kennedy, Thursday, last, it just had their spring event, and all of the Keller families were invited to that. It was a great, great, great family time and student time. And then in August, when we come back to school for open house, all of the students, both Kennedy and Keller, will be receiving a T-shirt with the Kennedy Wildcats. So that way, they can all wear their T-shirts on the first day and have school pride days throughout the entire year. So we're really excited for them to all have that in common.
And lastly, we wanted to make sure you were aware of our open house opportunities. On June 9th, all community, all families, past and current staff, are going to have an opportunity to join on Sunday, June 9th, at those prospective different places and times. So we're just going to celebrate. It's an opportunity to have another visit at those schools, have an opportunity to be together as a united community. And we invite any further questions?
You guys are doing an awesome job. I could feel the excitement, the planning stage, the execution piece, and now seeing everything coming together. I'm actually excited for the students. I'm always an advocate of change. Changing is good, and I like the idea that bigger schools brings in, may bring in a bigger challenge, but there are more options, good options for our students, which is wonderful. But my question for you is, these are wonderful engagement programs that we have now for the school to kind of create that easy transition into the new school year with the combination, combining the schools. My question is, what is the percentage of minority parents are involved in this? Have you seen a good percentage? Or are we not successful at reaching them? Or are they fully participating as well? Because during my campaign to become a trustee, there's a lot of parents who were concerned that these transitions, they were not informed, they were not being contacted, even though you guys mentioned that you actually went to visit homes, which I think that's awesome. And also, you guys talked about the Pakistani families, which is great. But I know that we have more culture and backgrounds in our school. So I'm just curious, is there a good participation percentage or rate for the minority parents? And if it's very low, how are we going to reach this or these groups so that all of us could be on the same page? Because I know even if the language is a challenge, every parent want their kids or kid to be successful as a student. So that's my question to you.
Thank you for your question, Mr. Lee. We can give one example. Janay, who is not able to be with us tonight on the current principal of Tank, worked with her team, and again, the teams here, like facilities and transportation, and recognizing and knowing her families, knew that they would have questions. And when a letter to describe transportation and what was going to happen wasn't going to be enough information, they worked with our team and then their site-based team to personally call all of the families to make sure they didn't have any questions. They've also done different parent meetings and different onsite options. So that's just one example of how we've customized it, based on the feedback we've heard from the standing principals. Do any of you want to speak about participation at the family events or at the activities or things you've seen?
I can just, I can just say that I think you bringing that up and hearing some of the examples, but we can always be more intentional. And I'm not sure if we're gathering the data at this point. And I think it's a great intention for us moving forward to make sure that we're meeting all families. We've taken some strides, but are we really, truly keeping track of the attendance at these events? And I think it's something in the future we will consider.
I would say at our fall event, we probably would have loved to have more families. But we also knew, recognized it was fall. So it was still at a point where they were thinking about this school year. And so that's why we're really making sure that we are encouraging that for our one on May 30th. I would say, but if it's anything like Lincoln, Lincoln is a school of 150, and on any of our family nights, we normally have about 100 people attend or more. So I think if we can continue to build that culture and kind of bring that all together, I think we will hopefully be able to have that level of communication as well.
Joanna, did you have something to say?
I was just going to say, at our family event, we did have 20 out of our 54 families at Wikwak. However, we do not have any students or families at Wikwak that we would consider having any language needs or language barriers.
You going to follow?
Yeah. Thank you so much for that. I just want to make sure that, you know, we provide the equity. And because the fact that, you know, I was surprised, in a good way, that in Green Bay, we have more than 30-plus different ethnics and backgrounds. And it's a wonderful thing. And I just want to make sure that we don't leave or don't leave any community behind. That we have to put every effort to bring them to that front because different cultures has different ways of go about things. And I think we have the resources here in the school building to actually make that a success. So that's just a little concern. But overall, awesome job. Thank you.
James, did you have something?
I did, yeah. So first, appreciate the work. And this weekend, as I'm kind of prepping to receive the information in June around scenario C as that presentation takes place, I went back and looked at our evaluation criteria for the facility master plan and just kind of reminding all of us that this is, you know, a step in a much longer journey. And these were terribly difficult decisions. No one sat around and said, hey, we want to shutter facilities and disrupt families. Looking back at those evaluation criteria, I know that as we made these decisions, we ensured optimal use of the facility, right? We made sure that it could fit, and it would fill the school up, and we would make sure that that criteria was met. Hearing tonight, the amount of investment that has gone into the receiving schools to address educational adequacy, which was another evaluation criteria, is making me very optimistic that the district is really fulfilling its obligation to the community, that these were not moves that were just financial in nature and that we were going to, you know, not, you know, carry through with our obligations to see to these needs. So like my, first of all, I just want to applaud everyone for the hard work and know that it's not lost on me how much effort goes into this. And as we look at the next steps in the master planning process, you are setting a great example of, you know, the follow-through that is necessary to execute these plans.
Anybody else? I just want to agree with what James said, that it's okay to acknowledge where we started, right? Several years ago now. And knowing that this process was never going to be easy. So this work is just so incredibly important, and you have approached it with such sensitivity to our children and to our families, which of course, you know, this is the least we can do for them, right? And I'm just really, really grateful. Other communities are facing the same work with various success. I know Kenosha and Ashgosh and Wassa are districts that I've been watching and paying attention as they go through this too. And it's happening all across our state. So this is a long process, and you guys are on the front line. And this kind of detailed and intense attention to what our kids need moment to moment even, if, you know, if they, it just, I know it's a lot of extra work, but it's just so very, very important. And it signals out, like James said, it signals out into our community that we want to fulfill our promises that we made, our solemn promises, and we intend to keep them. So, okay. If anyone has anything else, I think that's it. Thank you. Thank you very, very much. Hey, the next, the next item on our agenda is the Head Start budget carryover request from Grant. Is there anybody that's going to be? Okay. Is it Rachel? All right, Rachel, we're ready. If you want to explain what the request is.
Good evening, everybody. Head Start is wanting to go to the Office of Head Start to request a carryover of some of our funds from this year into next year's budget. We have two big areas that we would like to spend those funds on. One of those areas would be new windows for our Head Start Learning Center that's at the 1150 Bellevue Street site. And the other piece of funds would be to do a training plan for our student information system, which is called Child Plus. It's a Head Start-specific student information system, and we're looking to do a training plan so that we can use it to its best potential. Both of those pieces, the windows, we actually had one bid come back today. We're looking at approximately $150,000 to carry over, and the other piece for the training plan is $30,000 to carry over.
We will be bringing that request to the board next Monday for a vote. Anybody have any, go ahead.
I just want to ask Rachel to clarify why we're carrying this over. What causes that?
Absolutely. So in terms of the windows, the materials, we aren't able to get them before the end of our budget, which ends June 30th for Head Start. We're looking more towards September, October, before we'd be able to get materials and to get the labor. Similar situation with the training plan. They wouldn't be able to start our training until July or August. So we would need to push that to next year's budget.
So basically, this is money left over, but because it's the federal government, there's all kinds of stuff you have to do to make sure that that money is handled correctly.
Absolutely.
Okay. Go ahead.
I got a question, just financially speaking. If you obligate the funds in this fiscal year, does that not negate the need to carry over? Because you've already accounted for the spending of it, even though it's in the next fiscal year. But if you make the obligation, maybe I should be asking the finance person. Okay.
Great question. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Rachel.
We have to obligate the funds by June 30th, but then we only have 90 days after that to spend the funds. And because the training plan is, would take place over the course of next year, it's really a next-year budget plan. And same thing with the windows, we can't guarantee that it would be done within those 90 days. So it would be best to carry it over.
Hey, anybody else have any questions for Rachel? All right. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Good night. Okay. Next, under operations. Okay, next under operations, we're going to talk about job description changes. And we're going to be joined by Mike Fries.
I'm bringing a few friends with me for, for a few of them in case there are any questions or any elaboration needed.
Okay, thank you. Can you guys introduce yourselves? I mean, we all know you, but just for people who might be watching.
Absolutely. My name is Mike Fries. I'm Executive Director of Human Resources.
Good evening, Board. I'm David Johns, Associate Superintendent.
Julie, of the multilingual learner programs.
We are continuing our journey of each month, bringing forward job descriptions as we work through the process of updating and modernizing, ensuring that titles are accurate, that descriptions are reflective of current and projected future duties. Approving a job description does not mean approving a position or a hire. It's just approving the description affiliated with whatever the role is that we're describing. So this month, what we've got for you, the food service team took some time and went through their entire department pretty much to review what they had been calling their positions. And they've provided us some, this is what they kind of were as addendums to a very general food service worker job description and updating them to be the actual job description for the positions. There's no budgetary impact on any of these positions. These positions all generally have people working in them. And so communication with those staff members to understand how those duties are modernly reflected in the equipment that they have and, and you know, the, you know, the various things that they're asked to do. So there was nothing too unusual or unique that, that I asked the food service directors to attend tonight or anything. But happy to try to take your questions if you have any on the food service ones prior to going on to the next one.
There's a lot of them.
Yes, there are, there are.
And for someone who's not, you know, bathing in the details all day of food service, this is an eye opening kind of, you know, to understand the full scope
Right.
of, of the job, jobs required to feed a lot of children every day.
Yes. I can share that, you know, I think I've shared this in previous months, that we have an estimated over 400 positions in the district. And so the act of updating, reviewing, refining, updating, reviewing, refining is something that is continuous. It's cyclical. It started before me and it'll end long after I'm, actually won't end. It'll keep going long after I, I, I'm not here anymore. So we appreciate the opportunity to share this information with you on the food service side.
Anybody have any questions? Okay.
I've got the facilities and grounds one, summer maintenance employee. That's one we've brought forward tonight. And we're in the midst of hiring for our summer employees, right? A lot of our high school students or our recent graduates serve in those roles. And we wanted to ensure that that seasonal role is updated accurately and then talks about the, the weightlifting requirements so that there's nobody in an unsafe situation. And so we work with the facilities team to, to bring that forward as well.
Do you, can you, do you know about how many that is, like summer seasonal?
Yeah, great question. My understanding and talking with the HR team last week is, is one of our associates is currently trying to lock down 18 returning folks. And then the work with the facilities team to find out, are there any additional openings that are, that are unfilled? We also have some adults that work for us during the school year in 10-month positions, but are interested in continuing employment in some capacity around. And so we're trying to determine other opportunities to partner some of those experiences. I know Julie's team is working carefully at looking at, hey, where, where might there be some interested folks who'd like to work year round? And there's meaningful work so that folks who are seeking a career change and, and coming to us say, well, I can't give up a 12-month position to only work 190 days. So what else you got for me? So Julie's team is working hard right now to determine how that might look to kind of package a couple of opportunities together. We have a lot of folks in our community interested in full-time work, year-round full-time work. And so we're looking at where does that possibly exist that might actually address some unmet needs that we've had? So we appreciate that inquiry.
A lot of ground work, we have a lot of buildings. So a lot of the grounds work happens in the summertime. And those are the, some of those employees will do that.
Right. And I would, you know, presume some of the outdoor painting projects only happen when there's nice weather, right? And yeah, you're only cutting grass when there's nice weather and some of those sorts of things, so.
Okay. All right.
Julie and David, would you like to talk about the last one, please?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. We're presenting to you for your consideration, a proposed description for the Associate Director of Bilingual Programs. If that position sounds familiar to you, it's because it previously did exist in that form through 2021. It was in 2021 that we consolidated that role with some other special program roles into one position, which was in the Teaching and Learning Department. What we're proposing for you here is to pull that function back out and to have it isolated as a focused position of leadership within our district, supporting our bilingual program, which is and can continue to be and will be even more a hallmark of the Green Bay area public schools, given the number of students we serve and our opportunities to meet more demand that's out there than we can currently serve. Currently, we have a situation where we have had to put 32 4K students on a waitlist as to whether they can enroll in our bilingual program. What I've learned about 4K students who are on a waitlist, a few different things happen. And I don't think any of them are in our interest as a learning organization. Sometimes families just don't go to 4K. Other times they, if what they really want is a bilingual experience, they'll go to a parochial school and begin a bilingual 4K there and never leave. And so there are some opportunities through having this role be in the form of a single person who can focus on developing staff, recruiting staff, and then also expanding our programming to be able to grow this particular aspect of the Green Bay area public schools to become an even, even brighter star for us. I have Julie here, who is, who would be in this situation, the director responsible for the work of this person, who can speak more about the details of the, the daily functioning of the role. So she's here for questions on that as well.
Anybody have any questions for Julie?
So who's, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Who's doing the work, best this work right now?
Currently, this work of the leading and coordinating the bilingual is done through a Director of Teaching and Learning Programs, who has bilingual among several other responsibilities.
Go ahead, Brian.
We have some new board members and I wouldn't mind the refresher myself with how this differentiates with our multilingual. Can you give us like the big umbrella? And then tying into that, if you can tell us roughly the percentage of students that would fall under the giant umbrella, which I'm, I know I'm messing up the phrasing with it. And not really tying into this question I'm going to ask anyways, the different, the number of different languages that are spoken within the Green Bay School District estimate.
So I do like your word big umbrella because that's what we use. So we, not to confuse you, but the students that we serve are called multilingual learners. And when you're a multilingual learner, here in Green Bay, we have two different programs that you can be served in. You can be served in a Spanish bilingual program or you can be served in an ESL, English as a Second Language program. So we have two different types of teachers. We have bilingually licensed teachers and we have English as a Second Language teachers. Approximately 60% of our students right now in Green Bay are in a Spanish bilingual program. 40% are served in an English as a Second Language program. We have about 40 different languages.
I want you to clarify that, what you just said, because I did the quick math in my head and that added up to 100% of the students. And I think, yes, so of the total, of the total number of students we have within the district, how many are receiving, under that umbrella, how many students out of the total?
We've got about 4,200 students who are identified as multilingual learners. That, that counts the students who are currently being served. Once you are, you exit the, the multilingual learner programs, you become like a level six. So you're an exited student. We have almost 2,000 of those students in our district who are level sixes. So they're no longer receiving programs. They are a former student who received programs.
So roughly a third of our students.
Okay. Go ahead.
Number of languages spoken, do you know offhand?
Around 40 is our current number of languages. Spanish is of course our most popular language.
Go ahead, Lynn.
So will you please explain the difference between ESL and bilingual?
So the goal of either program is proficiency in English, because that's what we want for all of our multilingual learners. But students who are enrolled in a Spanish bilingual program will become bilingual and biliterate in both English and Spanish. Students who are in an ESL program are taught in English when possible. We do have bilingual paraprofessionals who will support students in that home language. So we have bilingual paraprofessionals who speak Spanish, Mung, Somali, Koren, and we are looking for a Swahili person right now.
In this position, which is what we should be talking about here is, is we'll oversee this.
The Spanish bilingual program side, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Ryan.
When we're looking at this position, obviously it's a unique skill set with it. You know, in a previous meeting, we, 360 students, I think, was the number that we had that have never stepped foot in a school in the United States, or I'm sorry, in a public school that are Green Bay students, not counting kindergarten students. Take that and combine them with over 40, I can tell you 40 languages with a, being spoken in our schools. This is obviously a significant part of our students, which makes unique, you know, which makes Green Bay unique and all the other benefits of that. But this is definitely a, a unique skill set with this position, I would assume, correct?
Yes, we're looking for somebody who is, of course, Spanish bilingual, has the bilingual license and along with an administrative license.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. Was there anything else you guys had for us? James, did you have any questions? Okay, very good. Thank you, guys. Okay. Mike, Mike is staying put because we're going to now talk about compensation for our clerical positions.
Yes, thank you. First, I, I always forget to do this, but congratulations to Mr. Becker, Mr. Crowe, and Mr. Lee for their election to the board or reelection, right? I'm grateful for your service to the district as an employee and a Green Bay resident taxpayer. I know what, it's a big investment in our community and I, I do appreciate that. I'm here tonight to present you with a proposal. And thank you to the whole board, of course, as well, those of you that didn't have to run for election this time. Yep, yep, yeah.
Good save, Mike.
Yeah, thank you. But we're here to present you a proposal to make adjustments to the district's approach to compensation for positions that have historically been categorized as clerical. For those of us joining in person or online who may not know, the district's positions that have been categorized as clerical have been provided one of three single rates of pay labeled as levels three, four, or five. Once hired into a position, that rate of pay is basically static, except for the annual increase that is uniformly approved by the Board of Education. We do have a few positions that are classified as bilingual and they receive an extra $1 per hour. And our clerical staff who were hired in 2012 or earlier and are still with us receive a nominal stipend based on their longevity. In short, however, whether you're here one day or 10 years, staff holding a clerical job receive the same rate of pay based on being either that level three, four, or five. This is in contrast to most of our career type roles where there is a wage schedule that accounts for the great value that an experienced employee brings to our organization. We all know, I think, that the modern work environment is different than what it was 15 or more years ago. I picked 15 because that was prior to us all having these laptops and the Wi-Fi signals in the, in the, in the screen here and having the Google, the Googly system that we have. As, as technology and the modern work environment has, has evolved, our program leads, our school principals, our administrators, they have laptops with Wi-Fi, Google calendars. They have a Zoom app on their cell phone. And the role of what you may have thought of as a traditional clerical secretary has definitely evolved. We have heard from our staff over the past dozen or so years that we have lost or lost out on hiring valuable talent to other public and private sector employers who are offering more competitive salaries, opportunities to move along a career development wage scale or both. What I'd like to be share, sharing with the public, of course, is that our Board of Education has voted for an annual cost of living adjustment in line with the computed and allowable increment annually. And that has gone a long way in shoring up what can be done to quote unquote, keep up. I should also mention that individual board members have approached me personally to inquire about what options do we have for career progressions for some of our non-exempt or hourly staff. So for these reasons and others, the district began meeting with interested stakeholders internally a few years ago to see what could be done. They did some internal reviews and got input on different clerical methodology. And this project soon became a little bit bigger in scope than was initially planned for. So in February of '23, the district consulted with a firm, Cottingham and Butler. We sometimes refer to them as Carlson Detman because they've had some evolution in their name to initiate the work more formally. So what we presented to you is a review of the district's clerical jobs related to their job content, a review of the marketplace, and a redesign proposal of clerical pay structures. This was not, I can't emphasize this enough, this was not a study reviewing how many jobs we need or any performance reviews of employees. And this was not taken as an approach to cut anybody's wages. So the proposal we're bringing forward and asking you to vulnerable at the May board meeting is a stepped wage schedule and classification of positions based on the results of the study that was done, input provided by samplings of our clerical staff and supervisors. Due to what we learned during the entire project, we are also working on substantial job description updates and new, modern titles as needed that we anticipate bringing forward in June for approval. Before I stop and open it up for any questions, I want to acknowledge that a massive project like this taking multiple years to complete is not done, or is it even done, should we get your approval? We have sought to be transparent and to communicate with stakeholders whenever we had something new to announce, to get feedback on, or to require work from them or to work with. And we have adjusted our timelines and the next steps accordingly over the years. Last month, we shared our timeline and intentions with district staff who communicate with our clerical members who participate in the AFSMI organization. And today, we shared with all clerical staff and supervisors information about this plan I'm speaking to you about tonight. We're holding a brief meeting tomorrow to review that information. And all clerical and supervisory staff have been provided an open-ended input form to give us questions as they come up. And we are open to adjustments going forward as well. So I'll pause.
Thank you, Mike. This is, this is really important because we have, you know, unlike teachers who get their, you know, get lanes and, and steps. If you were, the position title's going to change, but probably this, I, I would imagine it'll be some number of years by which school secretaries will still be referred to by maybe everyone except the HR handbook of school secretaries. Because that's, maybe someday they won't. But if you were in that position and at a particular school and you were wonderful at it, you would still, you would have that same rate of pay with cost of living. But that, that's where you would be and you would be forced to make a decision to leave your school and seek something, except for those maybe rare circumstances where the role at your own building got more complex and got re-coded or. and got re-coded or something, that would be rare. So I'm happy to see this. Where, what step do the current, um, do the current pay grades fall on right now? Or is it not that simple?
Yeah, that's the question that everybody wants to know. I really appreciate that. We, we have the cost structure figured out with, you know, the estimates around this. And then what's going to happen is, if approved, we'll work with each individual to share with them where they've been placed. And then there's going to be an appeals process, not relative to the step they were placed on, but if there's concerns about how their position was graded. And so we'll, we'll have a process where people can respond to that, that part of it. And so it's a combination of experience in the district as part of the analysis. But it's not as simple as, oh, I've been here fifteen years, I'm immediately placed on step fifteen. We're working with fine about how that works, works out specifically on the schedule.
Okay, but, um, I'll just, I'll just stick with elementary school secretaries as they're currently called as the example. All of, all of them right now earn the same? Okay. And they all are one of these grades already, right?
They, for anybody that has like two hundred and ten days and they're a level three, they're all paid the same unless they are specifically designated as bilingual or have been here since two thousand and twelve with it or previous for that the nominal stipend for seniority.
Okay, so wouldn't that mean that all of the school secretaries who aren't bilingual and haven't been here since twenty twelve doesn't, wouldn't that automatically, my question, wouldn't that automatically point to one of these cells as where they are today? Like, don't they all make, for example, are they all H zeros today unless they're bilingual? Or are they all H sixes today or, or, right? I mean, unless you're, that's my question.
I think I understand, I'm sorry. Yes, they would all like, like, for instance, this year or right now, a level three is listed as twenty-four eighty-two. And that'll be adjusted with the four point one two adjustment for July one twenty-four. The schedule was created by applying that additional rate and then people will be placed accordingly. Based on their experience. And so there's going to be some variation among our current staff. So if you started yesterday versus you've been with us for a while, you'll end up on a slightly different spot.
Okay, so people will have some small increase if they just started yesterday, probably. And they'll get a fairly significant, so right now where there's no differentiation, what this will do is this will add that year of years of service differentiation in there. But then if you've been here so long that you get the old longevity bonus, then that also be looked at.
Yeah, we're, we're, yeah, that's why I apologize for, it's hard to say this because it is going to be person by person. We've got a hundred and eighty some folks took to place. Also, we, nobody will, nobody, if approved, nobody would experience a decrease. We can guarantee that. That's not, that's not going to happen.
Like, is FGHIJ this one, two, three, four, five, or not exactly?
Not exactly. We actually have between forty-five and fifty different positions classified as clerical. And so through the analysis process, it was kind of graded out accordingly. So people would, their position is placed in FGHIRJ, and then they move along the steps accordingly.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Rick.
I do. My question, some observations and then questions throughout the observations. This, is there an expectation of progression from along the steps of an, of a clerical employee or can, or do they have the option to stay in place as far as step level progression? And what I'm saying is from entry level, say, an entry level would, I would assume be a step zero. Or however, and then way on the other end would be either time in the role or mastery of the role. So is there, is there an expectation of continued progression along these, along those steps? And if somebody like stalls out or doesn't have the desire or the skill set to move forward, how would you, how would you work through those?
I really appreciate that. When we worked with the consulting group, they asked us about the philosophy of the schedule and how it'll be set up. We have, as a district, not applied anything other than continued experience to indicate movement along the steps. And that's how this would be proposed, is this is just tied to additional experience. This is not based on mastery of additional things. If somebody became eligible to move into a position that was a higher graded position, that's how they would be selected for that. Vicky, anything to add on that?
There could potentially through performance evaluation freeze someone, but I don't know of any case where we've done that in clerical.
So step progression then translates into time in the role. So, so if work experience, progression, like I said, from mastery or entry level to mastery doesn't necessarily factor into a step progression.
And that's consistent with how all of our step schedules are for all employees at this point?
Well, that, that, because I've done this before, there lies some challenges. Because if you, if it's just a time in the role without regard to performance, end up with folks getting more pay and not necessarily contributing more or, or, or working towards some level of mastery in that role. So my challenge to you would be, there, there needs to be some consideration to not, to more than just time in the role. I would also encourage some conversation about work experience and then some sort of progression in, in, from entry level performance to mastery of that role. I use those terms from, from a book I love, it's called The Leadership Pipeline, that talks about that sort of thing. It's more difficult to do because it requires more work on the part of the supervisor. But if it's just a time-bound step level increase, there's some risk in that, in just that. I'll just, just some things to think about.
Anybody else? James?
Um, yeah, I think, you know, Rick, you know, spoke my mind a little, all right? And that we recognize that this is a time-bound step increase. And it's my understanding that, um, from a recruiting perspective, the district is going to exercise some latitude when being presented with a new hire where on the step schedule, we would potentially hire. Is that a correct statement? Or is everyone that's coming through the pipeline through talent acquisition going to stop, start off at the lowest step?
No, that's, that's correct. New hires' consideration will be given for years of experience, um, which we have not, we have not been able to do that before in this employee group. And when you see the different types of jobs in there, a lot of those jobs require, I mean, to get the best talent out there, you have to have had some experience in accounting, finance, human resources. They're just not going to look at us for a starting, yeah, so.
Okay, and one, one follow quick. The cost to, um, the district for implementing in twenty-four, is, is it my understanding that that is an estimate that has been worked out through, I know you're going to have to take cases individually to place them in the correct step, but is that, you've already gone to kind of work through that framework and that's the cost that we're looking at?
Yes, that's absolutely correct. And it's, I would say, yes, it's written in pencil, it's not etched in stone because we need to continue to communicate with all stakeholders to ensure that there haven't been some, you know, in some cases, maybe some evolution of things. Maybe, maybe a few folks retired in a department and the department's been reorganized slightly in the months since we completed this and hey, this is a chance to get this this way. So there's going to be a little bit of flex potentially, but yes, that estimate is based on that, applying that template.
That's not a one-year expense, that is just a structural cost increase.
Yes, that's correct. And, and then obviously, as, as staff retention moves along the scale, just like with educators, administrators, our facilities, deaf and hard of hearing, interpreters, et cetera, they move through steps. And so if they stick with us longer, we have that, right, experience, right, skill. Hopefully some wisdom there then, right, versus somebody who is just getting to know us.
Thank you.
Ryan.
I use this as an example often when looking at teachers' schedule and contracts and stuff like that from different experiences we've had in the district. But one thing to look at is when you're employed with the district, you're employed by the Board of Education and teachers, that kind of comes into placements and stuff like that. What, what I like about this is this also gives opportunity for staff to move up from, and I think that's kind of what Rick was maybe alluding to and with just more under, like, having understood how the district does things and public education works on it. You and I have had conversations before about the possibility of staff earning more credentials, particularly within the trades, but also within this, this recategories within the, um, this job field and the classifications on this. Would this change in classifications make it easier, provide opportunities for our staff to get micro credentials or trainings in certain areas to help them move up if they want to switch classifications on it?
It absolutely makes it clearer that the position, let's say, you're interested in a position that's in, you know, this grade band, but you're currently in that grade band, we can more clearly delineate this is what's required. And then we can, you know, talk about what are the professional learning sequences that, that need to take place so that somebody can say, hey, I've done this now, I'm ready for this, and I'm a great candidate when it opens up, yes.
That also gives us the opportunity and provide those opportunities to those staff members within, you know, as far as when we get this all shaken out and better organized that, okay, we have some that's really strong. We'd like to help you out with a partnership with an area educational organization to move you forward. So we continue to keep our own employees and grow our own employees and make it beneficial for them within. So I'd like to see something similar, you know, eventually plan where we can tie that in as far as the changes going up if they'd like to, how we can continue to support that in a lot of our support roles, but I don't know how many times I said support there in, well, that's two sentences. But within a lot of our employees are not necessarily on teacher contracts. So we're support staff and everything else on how we can continue to show their worth and their value here within the district and how we can help them along.
Thank you.
So, in other words, this is a big step toward retention. I mean, it's pretty cutthroat out there now for, for people who want to work in public education. People have a lot of options. Can you talk a little bit about what other districts around us are doing? Are they doing something like this or are we going to be, once again, the innovators?
In general, this is a more innovative move than we've seen with a lot of our counterparts. But we've all quite an increasing competition. We are getting on a approximately weekly basis inquiries. Everybody wants to know what we're doing because they're trying to just gather the information so that they can make their decisions. So you're seeing it across CISA's six and seven collectively with individual districts really wanting to know. So what are you doing about this role, that role? I think sometimes because they have an individual they'd like to hire and they're trying to figure out where do they have to offer to get that individual for that particular role.
You mean one of our people?
Not necessarily.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, they're trying, I mean, oh, any, keep going.
No, it's, but it's, it's, it's a, it's a fascinating field right now across the area in this realm, so.
Okay. Yes.
One thing I've witnessed and heard from employees at different times and in different spots is one of the great things we do is provide full-time hours and benefits. And I think that's a significant commitment that previous boards, I don't even know when they started doing that. And that's important for us as a body to continue to do because I think that is a major thing that attracts people to Green Bay. And I'm assuming that hasn't changed in the last eight or ten years with it, that when we're providing that opportunity to support staff and if anyone's listening or maybe looking for a support staff position, that's a, it's a great thing that we do and we need to continue to do.
So you're basically saying that other districts are watching and waiting to see and would follow suit if we offer this, possibly?
I'm not able to fully speculate on that. I just know that there's a lot of interest right now from a lot of our neighboring districts and across their CISA's six and seven around. What are people doing with regards to compensation structures for support and non-exempt positions? Lot of interest.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Andrew.
I, I think it would be very difficult, especially in a, uh, you know, bargained environment to have judgment, judgment calls made repeatedly at review time about whether you're going up, whether you're staying at the same step or going up one or going up two. I think maybe there could be some element for if you gained, uh, you know, gained a special skill or maybe that's where bilingual qualification, maybe that would be worth a couple of, of steps if it doesn't result in a whole lane change. But I think primarily, and correct me if I'm wrong, primarily, we're looking for a way to keep our people here by improving wages a bit. And this is a, a better, a way to do it that rewards something. It rewards primarily longevity rather than just and across the board, you know, dumping more money out there and then you're not, I mean, we're using this added money to reward longevity because that's the opposite of turnover. Is that, yeah?
Rick?
The other, the other caution with this is that if our, if our step system is too rigid and the market dynamics change dramatically and we're still stuck with, with what we put in place, it could end up giving you the opposite effect. So there's, there's a watch out for that, I would say. That, that's really it.
Anybody else? All right. Oh, go ahead, Co.
I, I think it's a, a wonderful thought process to, to encourage and to reward those individuals that are rested and want to be with us. But based on my experience, the idea, everyone deserves, you know, their, their, their promotion or their pay. And also in the, in the name that we, we want to be competitive in the market. But also the same token, you know, just a little bit of caution that in my experience, it doesn't matter how much money you throw at, at the, at the project, there's always somebody that could do the same or do better than you. Outside of that, it's always the, the, the environment that we create here, that people wants to be here, the culture. And that, I think it's key as well, besides the technicality behind the budget or the money size or whatever we're thinking of. So I, I think that the, the culture piece is also a very important ingredient here besides the money.
I agree with that. Anybody else have anything to add? Okay, then we're going to move on. Thanks, Mike. We're going to move on to our budget update. And we're going to be joined at the board by Angie Robley. Hello, Angie.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
I'm going to wait for Kenzie to, okay, there is the, the big two slides. So this will be fairly brief. I was asked to just bring an update on our budget situation. I will also be coming back to the board as I did last year with a preliminary budget document. So we'll kind of be reviewing this a little bit more in depth in June. But as an update, so at this point in time, based on the projected budget needs from the departments, we've gathered the information from the schools and estimates on salaries and FTE. So we have successfully closed that gap of two point two million dollar deficit, which we had been projecting back in December. We did this by strategically kind of maneuvering those ESSER We did this by strategically kind of maneuvering those Esser dollars that we still have available through September 30th to pick up summer school for one more year. And then also for some of our just eligible routine expenditures that would have otherwise come out of Fund 10. So we, we kind of planned shell game a little bit there with our Esser funds, which is going to be helpful for next year. And then we also did a little bit different approach this year in our budget budgeting with our departments here at the district level. We started doing or tried a zero-based budgeting approach. In years past, we have always taken kind of the same allocation from year to year and given it to the departments to allocate within their budgets. And it's been very successful. So the requests that are coming through are really based on need and on plans and, you know, what is needed for next year. So that process has been, has been also very successful at helping close that, close that 2.2 million dollar deficit. So as we continue into the next state biennium budget, we continue to face declining enrollment. That's not a secret. We are projected to continue to decline for the next several years within the district, which equates to less revenue for the district. Esser dollars run out in September, so we no longer have that stream of, of income like we've had for the last few years. So as a district, we still need to continue to do the work to reduce our expenses in order to balance the budget in future years. So the cost-cutting measures of consolidating schools and staff attrition that were taken for the 25 school year are aimed at addressing the structural deficit and continue to be savings in the future. So if you recall back in September, when I came to the board for an update on budget, we were, we were at approximately a 6.5 million dollar deficit. A significant factor which reduced that budget deficit in years ahead was the board's decision to close and consolidate three elementary schools, which was about a 2.4 million dollar savings. While at the same time addressing our declining enrollment issue. And in addition to consolidating schools to address declining enrollment, the 2022 referendum investments that the community supported, those in our schools are another way in which the district is working to retain and recruit students as well. So as we look forward to the next biennium budget, we are still estimating a 6 million and an 11 million dollar deficit in 25, 26, and 26, 27. In that projection, I do have that 325 per pupil increase that Governor Evers had voted and put into legislation for our forever annual increase. However, that guaranteed 325 annual increase is currently tied up in a lawsuit to be overturned. So that's why I say there is some uncertainty as what that state biennium budget looks like. As for 24, 25, we do get that $325 increase per pupil on the revenue limit. The 26, 27, just another reminder, we also have been talking about this for the past couple of years is that this or the 26, 27 budget will be the last year of the district's 10-year non-recurring operational referendum, which has provided the district with 16 and a half million dollars of revenue per year for operations. So after that drops off, right, we're going to need to, to fill that gap and that deficit is going to look much larger than, than what we're facing in that next biennium budget. So again, you know, we will continue to, to tighten up, right, to tighten up our budgets and, and look for reducing expenditures as as a, as a team and as a district as we move forward into the next, the next few years. So Angie and her team will be back next month to give a far greater detailed budget as we head into and start planning for the 24, 25 school year.
Okay.
Have a question.
Oh, gee.
Angie?
Yeah, hi, James.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Um, in your projections for the next couple of years, what are you using as the cost of living increase?
I have in the current projection, 3%.
So 3% is a cost of living increase. And just a quick follow-up. Um, the zero-based budgeting process, and you said this is, this is new this year?
Yeah. So we introduced that to our, our departments at district office. Not at the buildings because that's based on allocations per student enrollment.
Okay. So it's just at the districts. And in the past, when there was just a carryforward allotment per function, I guess, if that's a good way to describe it. Were those held to specific purchases or was a function just saying, this was last year's allotment, you have it again this year. So there wasn't necessarily like a diligence in planning their expenditures? And that's what you're trying to close the gap on with a zero-based budgeting process?
Yes. I mean, so of course, right, the, the, the budgets that were created by the departments, you know, were thought through, they knew what they had, right? Your software costs, your additional time for professional development.
Right.
But yes, there may have been some things in there that were like, well, just in case or, right, or yep, you know, this is, you know, $10,000 here. I was going to use it for that, you know, last year I never did, but just in case something comes up, right? So that's, that's what we were trying to, you know, tighten up on, you know, looking at like really having those, you know, department budget owners really look at the expenditures, right, what their plan is for next year. And some, you know, some came in lower, some came in higher because, right, I wanted, I wanted a reality. I didn't want, you know, I didn't want people not asking for enough if they really felt that they needed more for, for next year.
And you have a standing process to handle, you know, extra budget requests, you know, non-budgeted requests because given it's the first year, right? And there is a history of, oh, well, well, we had allocated this money for, you know, this plan, but I need to use it over here. Now that that opportunity is gone, you have a standing process where, you know, the, the departments, given they missed planning for a particular expenditure or something arises, you can handle that through the, the current year.
Yes, that's correct, James. And then another thing is to that point, I also am in contact with, you know, the budget owners, especially of the larger, larger budgets to make sure that, right, I mean, I'm always doing the reconciliation process monthly to make sure that we're coming in. Or, hey, this, this doesn't look like we're spending where we thought we were. What's going on teaching and learning or what's going on facilities? So those conversations and communication, I'm constantly in communication with those departments. Technology is another one to make sure that, that we're on track. And if we're not, then that's right, then, hey, we're not going to spend, you know, this hundred thousand. So, hey, I heard that HR needed something over here and, oh, somebody wanted to do this. So yeah, so I think that, that that communication and that process has definitely evolved over the past couple of years. And yeah, I, I think that, that it's successfully moving along with all the departments.
Angie, just to kind of remind everybody, what is our yearly operating budget approximately?
Sure. A little over 300 million is, is Fund 10.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Like if you put all the different fund balances together though, like, do you have an idea of what that number looks like?
Yeah, it's well over 450 million. I'd have to take a look, but yes.
All right.
But we talk about Fund 10, right? We talk about which is our operations. We talk about Fund 27, which is special ed, which is, you know, 50 million dollars. So we always hone in on those, those larger, the larger budgets because that's, right, that's what we're trying to balance.
Right. I just, I think it's sometimes just good to remind people about the vastness of our budget, which is shocking. You know, if, if you're not, if you're not kind of in this every day, it can be kind of shocking for people to understand.
Yeah.
So Esther funds, so we're coming toward the end.
We are.
And we're going to spend every cent.
You bet we are. Thank you.
And then the zero budget approach that is really interesting. I remember you telling me about that some, some months ago and.
Yeah, it's, it's been great sitting down with, with all of the, you know, the different directors and departments and walking through, right? I've learned things, right? I'm, I'm always learning things and David has joined me with some of his team members. So I think he's learning things and it's been a really good, a really good process. Communication has been, right, that helps, right? You kind of know where people are coming from. So yeah, it's been, it's been a success so far.
So you're planning to use it in the future as well?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions, anybody? Go ahead.
Thank you.
Just a question, is the budget process, the spending of money, is it tied to a strategic top-down objective? Or is it a bottom-up type of thing right now? And could you use more strategic vision and projection from this level to, to make priority decisions better?
We're operating off of the existing board's strategic priorities. And David Johns is going to be leading the charge on exactly what you're suggesting. We, we need the board's input. And whether we continue with the four priorities that are in existence today or whether they need to be updated. So yes, to your question, that will be very helpful once we, right, once we have those more, I guess, more up to date, right? I mean, it's been a while since, since that work has been done. So that will be very helpful, I think, for everyone.
It, it's overdue, but it's on, it's definitely on the shortlist of, of things we need to get done. So anybody else? Um. Yep. That's it. Thank you very much. Okay, next, we're going to have a one-year kind of update on our synergics from Josh. Hey, Josh.
Hi there. Yeah, and we're not quite to the one-year mark, but.
Yeah, I saw today that we purchased it in like February of last year, but we didn't start implementation until the summer.
Yeah, that's correct. I will got a screen to share here. Okay, so you're right. It was approved by the board on February 13th of 2023. If, if you'll recall, we signed a multi-year contract and the problem, we were trying to solve a few problems. The, the first is that if you remember, we had a, an incident at one of our high schools where they got swatted, right? And what swatting is, someone calls in a fake threat to basically get the SWAT team to show up and we, we found that our existing systems for letting people in the building, people coming up to the buildings know that there's something serious going on were not adequate. The PAs could be hurt everywhere. We had no visual cues. We, our drills weren't preparing us for these types of situations. So we researched some solutions and suggested this to, this system to the board. So in, in addition to handling those sorts of situations with the visual cues in the PAs, it's also got a system where every staff member wears badge. And if you have if you have an incident that requires support, you can press that button three times. There's a team at every building. It shows up on their computer, on their phone saying Josh needs help by room 211. And then those, those teams can quickly respond. So we, we installed it over the spring and summer of 2023. We were live in August of 23. That included the laptop integration. So every staff member that's got a laptop, if there were, say, a tornado warning and, and it was activated, not only would the strobes go off, you can see a strobe right up there on the ceiling there. Or maybe you can't. Right, yeah, right up there. We've got one back there as well. So if we had a tornado warning, that strobe would start going off. In this building, we don't have a PA system. So we've got a phone integration where it comes through like all the speaker phones saying it's a tornado warning, take cover. And then on every laptop, you, you would all be seeing something come up on your laptop saying that there was a tornado warning. So we worked on that, on those integrations over the 23, 24 school year. The PA and phone integrations were complex. We have a lot of buildings. A lot of those systems were of varying ages and capabilities. So we have, we now have all of our PA systems integrated with the system as well. So I wanted to go over the alert types really quick. You'll see these posters all over the place. Purple is lockdown intruder alert. So that's your Alice situation where you've got, it's got an intruder in the building that's presenting a, some kind of potential harm. Red is secure the building outside situation. We're going to get into that a little bit later. Yellow is a secure the building inside situation. Green is an evacuation. So perhaps you remember a few years ago where we had a mercury scare at one of our, at one of our schools where they had to evacuate. That would be the color that you used there. Orange is tornado. Blue is severe thunderstorm. And then we've got the staff alerts that I talked about. That's the, I'm a staff member. I need help with, with the situation here. So this is, this system is fully now a part of our, our state mandated drills that we do, our safety drills. So whenever there's a, a safety drill run, the system is activated. So the students and staff are get used to hearing it come over the PA. They get used to seeing the strobes go off. And we did 152 safety drills using the system this year. Viva, did? Did you do one at Southwest, hopefully? Lot of drills. So you see there, of course, a tornado warning. We were just a few weeks removed from the statewide tornado tornado drill and then a lot of practicing of the lockdown intruder alert as well. So secure the building alerts. This is, this is interesting. So we had these can happen for two different reasons. Something that's happening inside the school, most commonly. Actually, this is a medical situation where you want the kids to stay in their classrooms so that, because there's some sort of medical emergency so that EMTs can get in and, and do their jobs and get out quickly. There may also be a reason to secure the building for an outside situation. So most frequently, this is when there is some kind of police action going on in the neighborhood around the school. And the police advise us, hey, can you please keep the kids inside while we work on this situation? So we, we had 19 inside situations this year up through end of April and seven outside situations this year. This is really nice for traveling staff. As a lot of the people I oversee are, are traveling staff, they're assigned to maybe multiple buildings or no building in particular. Like I'm not assigned to a building in particular. I work here out of DOB, but if I were to come up to West without any indication, I wouldn't know a, a potential situation in the building. I could be putting myself in arms way. I could be putting the police in an uncomfortable situation. Now, the staff alert, so we, we say three for me, three clicks for me. That's when a staff member presses the badge three times to alert the building team that they need assistance. System shows building team who's in need of assistance, where they are in the school. Actually, the, the map on, on the app will follow the person around if they're moving through a large school, which one of our administrators mentioned was a very nice feature that we didn't actually expect. And it will kind of follow them around until that alert is closed. The really cool aspect of the system is a badge can work in any one of our buildings and only works in any one of our buildings, right? So if I'm a, a staff member that travels around a lot or I'm a substitute teacher and I don't know where I'm going, I don't need a different badge for every school. I get, I get my one badge. It works wherever I go. And these staff alerts are particularly useful for substitute teachers who aren't in the building maybe every day or in the same building every day where they don't know how to get to a phone or if they do. Or if they do get to a phone, what number to call to get the front desk, right? All they have to do is hit those three buttons. It doesn't matter where they are. They don't need to memorize 42 different extensions for a front office. So these are the staff alerts through the end of April. Classroom support is the most common reason for it to be pressed. So this is a teacher requesting assistance from the administrative team in their classroom or near their classroom. So we're 2,000 there. We had 91 medical alerts. And these, so this could be something as similar, as simple as someone falling on a playground, because remember, this does work outside as well. Or something much more serious, like a seizure or some, something like that. 124 physical altercation alerts, 115 elopement. So that's when kids take off, try to leave the school. And then we had five that are kind of categorized as other there. So I do want to speak specifically about Manoka Hill, because the staff are using the system differently. Manoka Hill is an alternative school here in the district. And they accounted for over 50% of the staff alerts in the system. At Manoka Hill, they basically do things backwards from our other non-alternative schools in terms of their use of sentegics. So at, say, a comprehensive high school, for example, the student doesn't need to be escorted to the bathroom. At Manoka Hill, they do, right? So rather than getting on the radio every time a kid needs to go to the bathroom, they press their badge to get someone from the office to come down to take the kid and escort them to the bathroom. Conversely, they get on the radio for more serious sorts of needs. At a comprehensive high school, it's just the opposite. The radio is kind of more casual, and the sentegics alert system is for the more serious needs. So it's kind of neat that they managed to make the system work for them. But they are overrepresented in that data, just because of the nature of the way they use it. So going forward, one thing we're very excited about is we are going to be given access at no additional cost to the district to visitor management system through sentegics. So some of you may have experienced this in maybe another school district or at a business where you check in, say, at the front desk. You provide your identification. They scan it, they print out a badge. And then when you leave, you know, you scan your badge. So they know who's in where. You get a badge with your name and your picture on it, that kind of stuff. So we're pretty excited about that. Like I said, no additional cost to the district there. Although there may be some expenses associated with buying the actual scanner pieces of equipment. We're investigating that right now. We're looking at doing a little bit of color reassignment, because we've gotten feedback that yellow and green look a little bit too close to each other. So we're working on that. We're going to get rid of one or the other of those colors going into next year. We're also looking at consolidating some of the alert types. So we've got a separate one for tornado and thunderstorm, but functionally, they're the same in terms of what staff and students are expected to do, which is, you know, shelter away from a window and not go outside. So we'll probably be consolidating at least those two alert types. And then we will continue to monitor data. The data is very interesting. We could get breakdowns by school, right down to the location where events are happening within the school, so we can verify trouble spots. We can, we can see patterns that we were told we were likely to see, which is that, for example, our elementary schools are much more likely to use the staff alert than our high schools are. So to be honest with you, the high schools tend to only use the staff alerts if there's a fight or something like that. Whereas a lot of those elopements you're seeing are happening there in an elementary classroom. Or a lot of situations where students just kind of losing control within a classroom and maybe need additional support and remove the other students to let them cool off a bit. So we'll continue to monitor that data. And hopefully you get another report next year on progress. We've got four more years left on this.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, Brian.
You said that the Chromebooks send out, or you receive a notification on it. I assume that's with whoever's in. So if a teacher from Lombardi is at Washington or Edison and they're on the Edison system, if something happens at Edison, then they'll be aware of it, too?
Good question. And no, that is not the way that it works. So your computer knows what building you're at. So it will give you alerts for the building that you're in. As just a regular staff member. So if you're an Edison employee, you've gone over to Lombardi, say, for a professional development, and you have a secure the building outside situation at Lombardi, you will get notified. But you would not be notified about anything happening at Edison through this system. Now, we do have other systems for communicating to staff members specifically about things like secure the building. So it's likely they would be on a text or something coming out of Edison. But this system knows where you're at and only gives you the relative alerts. Now, if you're a principal at Edison and you're over at Lombardi and one of your staff members activates a staff alert at Edison, you're going to get notified no matter where you're at. Does that kind of make sense?
James, did you have a question?
I did. Now, Josh, thanks for the update. So thinking back to last year, I remember this was a substantial purchase. The price tag was not low. And it was a long-term contract that we entered into. And there were, you know, at that time, you know, board members that expressed vendor concern, whatever. So a question to you is, how has Ben working with sentegics as a vendor? How responsive have they been? And how have they been to work with?
Yeah, they've been, they've been really great to work with, actually. No issues in terms of support. We felt the implementation went pretty well. Some of those integrations were pretty complicated and involved maybe three or four different vendors. They supported us throughout. I haven't had any real concerns about the reliability of the system. It's functioning as we expected it to function and no concerns about support.
Yeah, I just have a quick follow-up. I recognize the numbers that you put up as far as the number of times that, you know, the alarms or the notifications have been invoked actually are pretty surprising. And how many times that we've used the system and the training that we've done on it. I know that there have been a couple of false alarms that have been, you know, done. But have you gotten any kind of formalized feedback from staff about its implementation and their perspective on its value?
I have not. I've not got any formal feedback in terms of a survey or something like that. I have some anecdotal feedback from administrative teams saying that it enables them to respond quicker. And really good feedback from admins and the GBEA about, again, the low learning curve with sub-teachers who tend to maybe require the most support out of any of our, I guess, our classroom users. I had intended on doing a survey, James, I just ran out of time.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, anecdotal is fine for now, because, you know, we all, I was a large supporter of this system because I think situational awareness is critical to the response. And this is a fantastic system for creating that situational awareness. So I'm on board, but I do think it would be valuable to the board as we navigate the term of the contract to make sure that it is seen as valuable and a key component of our security in depth.
Sure. And you mentioned the false alarms, and I would expect those to go down as people get used to the system. The good news is that in each of those false alarms, our staff and students responded appropriately until they were told to do otherwise. I understand that that can be a pretty scary situation, even if it's just for a few minutes. But it did respond appropriately. And most of those false alarms are just the result of an actual very serious incident that just doesn't happen to be a school shooter. I mean, you're talking about a teacher coming across an unresponsive student that you know that they need urgent medical care. You've got this thing in your hand to ask for help. And it's just like, it's just a matter of freaking out a bit. So like I said, I hope that it does cut down as people just get used to it. But I totally kind of get why they happen.
Sure. Thank you.
Anybody else? I'm sorry, James, did you have more?
Nope.
Okay. Brian?
I like how you shared with us the fact that it can track within the building where someone's going. One of the things, and the use that Manoka is using with it, one of the things I've experienced as a teacher is when you were following a student who's in crisis, that gives you that opportunity for more people to get there quickly and not be, you know, on the radio or, you know, the response with that. It just, it cuts down on the tension. And I think that's an added benefit of particularly how they're using it at Manoka. But I've noticed that radios usually amp up the level of tension. And especially when you're working with students that have behavior and emotional needs, they hear what's going on everywhere, and it can just increase it. So I think one of the greatest things we did was get earpieces for some of the radios, but also just that sense of normalcy with it as far as, okay, I've got a, this isn't a big deal. It's not going on over the radio. It's being utilized where it needs to and not adding that tension for it. So kudos to the staff at Manoka for adjusting to what they need with it. Is there, it's kind of jumping a little bit with it. Is there a particular process that our administrative teams use in the buildings for a secure the building situation? Or is it based on the dynamics of the building and their staff comfort and the student makeup on there?
Well, you know, each building is unique. So they, they all, within certain parameters, have a plan for their own building, which is to keep students in classrooms, keep people from going outside, keep people from outside from coming inside.
Specifically within internal issues. So I know you mentioned if there's a medical situation or if there's, you know, a different dynamic that the building understands, this is why we're keeping everyone in the classroom. Either rescriving someone to the office, or we have someone having a seizure or whatever. Do the principals have that ability to change it? And I would assume they do, but there's some sort of consistent expectations with it? Or did I just muddle this up?
Each school leader works with Chris Coller, our district safety and security coordinator, to ensure that whatever their building needs, they're at least meeting a standard of expectations.
I do want to bring back your original point, Brian, though. One thing about this system is it does allow you to, a staff member to surreptitiously ask for help, whereas reaching for a radio, reaching for a phone can frequently escalate situations if a kid's already having a hard time.
I fully understand that.
Go ahead.
Okay, I want to start off by saying that I do remember the security drills. Now that I thought about it more. I was wondering if it would be possible to, at the beginning of each semester or at the beginning of each trimester, I think East has, for just like a very direct reminder of what each of the colors mean to go out to each classroom, whether it's like each advisory or something. Just because, like, having experienced a false alarm, like, not knowing what that color means is very scary. Like, it is, do I stay in? Do I leave? And it's kind of like fight or flight. So it's best to just, I think, just drill it into the kids' heads right at the beginning of each semester or trimester, whatever it be. Just like, this is what this means.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great recommendation. I will bring that to who needs to hear it. Thank you. Do you have, in your classrooms, do you have the color guides?
So that's really funny that you ask. They're actually all in Somali, I think. So yes, we do have them. Don't know how to read them, though. So some students do, which is awesome. I love that there's different languages, but I think it would be best to have all the languages.
For the record, there are four different versions of that poster in the four most common languages spoken in the district by our students, so.
Okay. Brian?
And also, if we could possibly tie it in for our ID students and everything else using any of the programs that they utilize with their, with pictures for non-verbal students, maybe on the signs also.
Yeah. Yeah, there. Yep. Should go tearing off the wall.
Yeah, then she put it in.
Yeah, they're gone. They're gone.
Okay. All right. Are there any more questions for Josh on this item? All right. I think, I think we can move on. Thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to policy and governance. And Melissa's going to come and give us a background of every single one of these policy changes in minute detail, so everyone get comfortable. Go ahead.
Recognizing that in the past, during the next session, we've often bundled packages with votes on there. Is it possible, Laura, that we could, or Melissa, that we could look at moving this to, similar to our consent agenda on policy items? And pull anything that we don't feel like we need to?
You mean like for next week?
For either next week, and it is an ongoing thing where we have these large items that we've discussed during this point, making an opportunity rather than where we bundle them. I'm sure it would make Kinsey's job easier for motions. It would be, I don't know, the consent agenda items on it, but just as an operating part of it.
Maybe. I'm not sure exactly what you're saying.
So, go ahead, Melissa. Do you understand?
Okay, all right. What he's saying is that all of the policy revisions, adoptions, repeal would be listed on the consent agenda, similar to like the employment chart for hiring employees. And the motion would be that the policies as presented, or it's going to be on the consent agenda, actually. So passing the consent agenda.
I'm guessing Andrew's going to ask this question. Just like on the consent agenda, we would have the ability to remove anything that we want to discuss further on it.
Okay, I have no issue with that. Andrew?
Well, the kind of halfway got there. But I think certainly there are policies that won't have any discussion, but some that will. I guess I'm a little reluctant to, once we start putting policy changes into the consent agenda, especially because those of the more hands-off model would suggest that policy is the only thing we're supposed to be doing. I guess I'm a little worried about slippery slope of consent agendas and just things. There's a presumption on the consent agenda that they are things that usually are very much pro forma. Retirements that have already occurred must pass. Retirements that have already occurred must pass, you have state requirement things. So I think the better approach might be to have some, do what we do now where there's some combination, or maybe we could talk about some reordering or take the ones that get more discussion tonight and maybe slide them up on the list so we can do one big motion together, but I've, I'd like to try other, I'm all for combining multiple votes together if there's not going to be discussion on many of these. I just don't want the slippery slope of it being a consent agenda, I guess.
Lynn?
I agree with Andrew. I think that it is dangerous to put policy votes in consent agenda. We've been doing a good job of, of bundling them together and, and moving the vote along. So I think we should continue to do it that way.
Okay, all right. Go ahead, Brian.
I appreciate that input on it. I'm just looking at like a mechanism with it, so it's just not, I don't want to say sloppy because we do a good job of packaging them on there with recognizing it. So just something for us to keep in mind of how we can do that. So to be honest, so Kinsey doesn't have to type up amended motions with letters A through whatever on it, so. But I fully appreciate and agree with what you're saying with not wanting to start that. So just some mechanism for it.
Okay. All right, Melissa. Let's, let's begin.
So I know, I know we have two new board members, so I just want to provide just a little bit of history. It was in the update, but just also for the viewing audience. In September of 2016, we proposed a policy review cycle. Really best practice is for policies to be continuously reviewed in addition to when the law changes and you need to bring legal updates to policies. So since that work started, we have reviewed approximately 322 policies and rules. The biggest series are the 300 and the 400 because those are the policies that apply to students. So naturally, those are going to be the series of policies that have the most, have the most policies that reside in those two series. There's over 225 policies and rules in those two series. Last April, we brought to you 23 of those policies in the 400 series, which were the nursing policies. We have updated about 13 odds and ends in the 300 and 400 series of their last year or so. Tonight, we're bringing you 44. I'm hoping to bring you about 45 in June and then working with the departments for the rest of the policies, the 100 or so that are going to remain, hopefully in July and August, and then we will have met our goal. We got a very late start, given a lot of the things that happened at the beginning of the year and preceded into the winter. So I'm hoping that we will still stay on track and meet our goal of the 300 and 400 series.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And thanks to all my colleagues who have, I, I know I'm like the, I feel like I'm, should be coming in, hi, it's me, it's Melissa. According to my friend Taylor, but. Okay, so the first one on our list is policy 133. Thank you, Brian. I think you got my joke. I know, I think you got my joke.
Is that a Taylor Swift joke?
It was.
Oh, sorry, you're like, who?
Viva, did you get my joke? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. All right, policy 133 and rule 133, this is coming forward at the request of Mr. Becker. When we last discussed the procedures for filling board vacancies, Mr. Becker asked for a little bit more specificity in the procedure with respect to the slate of candidates that would be coming forward. So we revised the policy accordingly and the rule accordingly.
Okay. Oh, go ahead then.
Please, just tell me one time, what's the difference between a policy and a rule and why do some have both and some don't?
Policy is really the general overarching statement of what the board's philosophy is on a topic. The rule is really the implementation of that philosophical position on a topic. There, there is, I guess, a belief or a position that rules don't always have to be brought to the board for approval because they are that administrative implementation. But when we do large-scale changes, we do tend to bring the changes to the board for the rules because otherwise you're going to get an incomplete story. So as you'll see in some of the policies tonight, without that administrative rule, you'd be getting an incomplete story as to making those changes in the policy. Sometimes we will send you an update in your weekly updates that we're updating a specific rule and if anyone has an objection, let me know by, you know, a specific time and if there's no objection, it will go into effect.
That's a good reminder to everybody, please read your month, your weekly, your weekly summaries that Kinsey labors over, like there's, there's so much information in there. Oh, James, go ahead.
No, I actually have a question about the changes to the policy and the rule. I didn't mean to interrupt you, Laura.
About specifically about policy 133?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
So, is my understanding that the primary change to policy 133 was Andrew's position that unless the board votes, the board has not taken any action? And really the, the amended paragraph establishing that the board will by majority vote approve the panel, is that, is that the nature of the change?
Correct. Paragraph C4.
Yeah. So then on the, in the rule, I think Lynn was the person, if I remember correctly, that wanted some bedrock, like what is the process that we're going to use to actually go through and filter the list of candidates down to an interviewing slate? And I think the primary change to the rule is you've added a verbose accounting of how we executed the, the prioritization process at the last board meeting, correct?
Well, I'm not going to take offense to your description of verbose, but that's correct.
Okay, but so, so the, the, the reason why I say that is, can we add to that rule that it's in Not to Wordsmith Online, unless otherwise voted upon? Because I don't think my intent in establishing that process was to codify it in a procedure, right? It was, we didn't have something, we, we have something now, but I don't want to remove from the board the flexibility for next time looking and saying, I want to alter this, right? And do something different. Is that, is that fair?
Yeah, I think that's fair. I can add in the beginning of C unless otherwise voted upon or amended by majority vote of the board.
Ryan and then Andrew.
I don't, and I agreed with Andrew on this, so I, you know, recognize that Andrew's name is on here as well, but I agree with the, the need for this. The way I'm reading the policy, it's not necessarily making the process that we used last time the process for other boards. This is just saying whatever process you've come up with, there's going to be a vote on the end to solidify that.
It's the rule. Look at, look at the rule. The 133 rule actually is the verbose process that we used. That's what I was referring to.
It's section 1C that was added.
The rule, okay.
Of the rule.
All right, Andrew?
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I think there's, I, I, I think the system, I think the system worked well. I think the system was far better than previous attempts that were, I, I believe were written on purpose to exclude candidates with certain viewpoints from moving forward in the process. And this was a very fair process that James created and I appreciate that. I think the, unless the board votes otherwise is important because suppose, suppose next, I don't think this will happen, but suppose next time there's nine applicants and there's a very clear five or six of the qualified ones, maybe the board reads them and just quickly proceeds to a motion to interview five or six. I mean, that could, could happen, so. But I do, I do like it. I, I appreciate it. I, I, it doesn't change my viewpoint that Robert's rules requires that if we didn't make a motion, we didn't do anything. I, I still stand firm on that and I think as long as we claim to follow Robert's rules of order, that is still true. But this will eliminate any question about it in this case.
Thank you, Melissa. All right.
So what I'm proposing for the next series, we have 44. I will read the number and if anyone has any questions, let Laura know and she can call on you, otherwise I'm going to keep going, okay?
Okay.
Does that work?
Yep.
Okay, the first policy is 321, school term. We are revising the name to school calendar slash year because the policy is really about how we create that calendar for the entirety of the school year. This was last revised in 2005, so we are just really putting into policy our practice of how that looks and who has a position with respect to developing that calendar. Any questions? Okay. Policy 321.1, this also was last revised in 2005. I think this policy was a product of an old practice of recognizing that Wednesday nights should be kept open based on what was the dominant religion at the time here in Green Bay. It's pretty much a universal practice across Northeast Wisconsin that school activities are not held on Wednesday nights. So I have changed the policy to be more culturally responsive, but it's up to you whether you want to continue with this policy or whether you think that this really isn't a governance issue and it should be left to the discretion of the high schools and the activities directors to manage and schedule student activities.
Lynn and then Andrew.
I was a little bit, I don't know if confused is the right word, but I thought it was kind of, I don't know, maybe. It, it surprised me that you would take out the word religious and change it to family, but then keep the rule. It's sort of like pretending we're not going to say religion. I just, I just don't understand the reasoning. If you're going to keep it and it really is because some people want it for religion, why are you taking out the word religion as?
This is really a starting point for the board to have a discussion about whether we even need the policy, if it's something the board wants to continue, or do you want to change the language? Just a starting point for the board.
Andrew?
Yeah, I think, I think the message, I, I, I would agree with Lynn. I think that the message is strange if you strike religious and, and keep the rule. In fact, I don't, I don't have a strong feeling one way or another. I think there, I guess I would maybe lean towards there being some benefit to a preference for avoiding one night of the week and Wednesday makes, makes sense. There's already an exception, an exception in there. Superintendent Byer says it's rarely requested. Now, whether that's because people assume, people think they're not allowed to versus they don't need to, I, I don't know. But I don't want to see something that just, that just strikes the word religious. I would, in fact, I don't know that, you know, item B alone, any co-curricular activity scheduled for Wednesdays after 6:00 PM shall be approved in advance, that, that is sufficient. Like I think you don't need the explainer. If it's a policy, it's just a, a policy. And why? Well, it was, it was done for, it was done for a certain reason before, I think maybe the reasons have expanded, but I guess I'm not, I'm not going to die on the hill of whether we keep the rule or not, but I, as written here, since it is just written to, as it was written here, if we were voting, I would have to vote no because it seems to be picking on religion, even though I know that's not the intent. Well, you say, okay, right, if item A says, well, if we took this vote right now today, right, we would be voting to strike out the words religious and other and replace it with family.
Right, for, for the reason that the feedback from our departments as well as the GBA is that this is not culturally responsive. There is one religion that holds religion classes on Wednesday nights and it's the Catholic religion. And so if we need a policy to say we're not holding student activities on Wednesday nights for religious purposes, then we might as well say it's for the Catholic religion which holds Wednesday night CCD classes.
Well, I don't think, so first of all, I don't know that there's, I mean, the, the Catholic Church holds CCD classes on Wednesday nights, but I don't believe that outside of the, I don't think that there is a particular religious importance to Wednesday nights. In other words, I think if Thursday nights had been chosen, that probably would have fit, from what I understand of the, the Catholic religion, I think they would have just slotted into whatever place we're, we're going. I think the, there are denominations that maybe would align more with Wednesday. But my, my, my point is, why do we need any of implementation sentence A? Why do we have to say religious, family, community related? We could simply say any co-curricular activity scheduled for Wednesday evening shall be approved in advance, just that. Then we're not adding in, we're not cutting out religion, we're not adding in other stuff. We're just, either we're doing it, either we're generally avoiding activities after six on Wednesday or we're not.
Ryan and then Lynn.
When we look at scheduling events, we got to recognize the fact that there's two groups that we schedule events for. You, we schedule within athletic and activity events, which are dictated also within the conferences. So if Sheboygan doesn't recognize this, there's still not going to be activities on Wednesday nights as far as athletics. By allowing building level activities or district level activities on Wednesdays, we can still be more culturally responsive to our buildings if need be, or we can provide more opportunities for those events, whether it's a board game night or it's a study group or whatever that would take place, especially if we have families that are willing to have their students study at 6 o'clock on a Wednesday and we have staff that's willing to do that or we have a program with Brown Collie Library that's able to do this on a Wednesday night, that the expectation is students would be able to participate in that and we can do it our way within our district on it by opening up another night for it. And if a student can't make an event, then we, we address that situation. I don't think it's necessary for us to tie up the student, the superintendent of schools and learning or designee by recognizing individual events when we have 40 schools and let's just open up that calendar for that time. If it doesn't work, the numbers are going to show it. So if you're missing a lot of people because they're at an event on Wednesday night that they previously booked, then we recognize that, but this could also be an opportunity for really encouraging and increasing our student engagement in different areas. So I'm, I'm all in favor of removing the Wednesday night exemption altogether.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lynn.
I, I agree with you, Brian, and I just want to point out that this was, this policy was approved in 1981. Green Bay was a very different place in 1981. It was last revised in 2005. We have a much, much more diverse community now and I just think that we ought to just take this away and quit talking about it and do what Brian said.
Go ahead.
I just, I hope you guys keep in mind as you're going through this. Right now, especially in our InterCity Student Council, we're focusing on student engagement because we're seeing a lot of behavioral issues, issues within our school and we think that a lot of those can be solved through student engagement and opening up Wednesday nights would be a really helpful tool to increase that. Also, keep in mind, a lot of the times with sports, with the Wednesday night rule, it's, you're still going to have the same amount of practice time. Like for me, we have practice five to seven, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and then Wednesday is just that one oddball day where it's four to six. So it's still two hours, you're still having the same amount of practice time, it's just an oddball day. So I think from a student perspective, I think it would be really helpful also from a perspective of trying to increase student engagement and increase community building. I think that would be really helpful to eliminate it.
Mick?
It doesn't sound like.
It doesn't sound like the policy is needed anymore, that we should just do away with this policy. If Wednesday is not sacred and we're not violating anything in a religious sense, then the policy is not needed. So, rewriting it, I would just say do away with it.
Brian.
And, and going back to what I was saying before with how the rest of the conferences are going to dictate the scheduling of it, it really does open up an opportunity for us in Green Bay to do some Green Bay specific things. And I'm not, and, and I'm focusing on the sports part, but like you had mentioned of student engagement, getting people in, getting parents in, it gives us another day to work with where they don't have to compete with having a game that night or having any activity. There's not a forensics meet at Luxembourg Costco on a Wednesday night. So, I, I don't anticipate other districts around us changing it, but it does, you know, we're the largest one, we can kind of call our own shots at some stuff, so.
Yeah, yeah. Cool, please.
I, I like the idea that, that time has changed, error has changed, and we have to be reflective of our community. And as of right now, I think equity is, is a big, has a value in our community. And, and I do think that if policies change, there's an impact, has a negative impact overall, I think it's, it's an awesome idea to see what that change will be. And I for one has always liked the idea of the engagement piece with our students and our parents because that drives academic standards and results. And I think that would, back to Brian's point, that I think it's going to give us new opportunities in district and also lends, pick it back on lens the idea that, you know, have to be reflective of our community. And I think that, I, I would definitely agree with removing the policies.
Okay. Do you have anything?
To belabor this, but I'm wondering if Ms. Parker Hill could join us just for a minute at the table. Ingrid is our interim director of engagement in, oh gosh, inclusion, thank you. And you've been listening to this discussion and I'm wondering if from the perspective of your position, you would want to weigh in on this and give some advice to the board.
I was pressing the wrong one. Thank you for having me. I think there's been some great conversation and I, I agree that the time has come for us to get rid of it. It served its purpose, it's got us where we are, but it does open up more opportunities for our students and our families to be more engaged and opening up that one day could, could be avenue for us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ingrid. Right.
Just the logistics part of this, would we need to, can we strike the policy, the Wednesday policy in general? Or would we need to approve it with this?
Yeah, so there is no rule, it's just a policy. So, if the policy goes away, then there's no prohibition on scheduling Wednesday night activities. Okay. Sure.
And I assume that someplace in our policies, there is protection for students that if they did need to go to a religious event on Wednesday, it would be covered and that would be an excused absence from something if it came up as a practice or there's protections there for students.
Number thirty-one on your list is release time for religious instruction. Okay, so we're covered there. So, James, did you have something?
No, thank you.
All right, all right, that seemed, good discussion, thank you, everybody. Are we ready to move on? Okay, go ahead, Melissa. Okay, three twenty-two, school day, last revised in two thousand and twelve. For some of you that have been around a while, we went from school days to minutes, counting for instruction. The policy was revised, but since it was last revised in two thousand and twelve, the very specific minutes that have been noted in the policy are not quite accurate for every single school based on how that school is structured. So, I was requested to eliminate those specific minutes and just note that the instructional hours be computed in accordance with state law and how those hours are computed and then the specific school hours for each building. Right, no questions? Questions? Okay. Policy three twenty-three point one is a new policy. This policy is consistent with state law that requires schools to observe thirteen, actually fourteen, when we count Arbor Day, different special days, and those are all enumerated in statute. And teaching and learning gets that list out to our schools and they then determine on a school basis how those days are observed. All right, okay. Policy three thirty-three, minimal revisions to this, this was last updated in two thousand and seventeen. So, we just did a few minor revisions to this policy, nothing substantial. Policy three forty-seven and rule thirty, three forty-seven, I'll take those together. We, over the years, have adopted a format for our policies to keep them consistent. So, when a reader goes to the policy, they know in a policy, it's the purpose, the definitions, implementation, enforcement, non-discrimination. So, really, we just updated three forty-seven policy to include the definitions that were in the rule and then revised a few other implementation things to move them over to the, the rule. So, you tidied them up? We tidied them up. I think that. We should use that from here on out. We tighten, we're going to tidy these up. Okay. Policy three seventy-two point one, last revised again in two thousand and five, was just addressed the sale of student media, did not address student media. So, I thought before you could sell the student media, we should probably address how student media is created and the rules around that, which was the model policy for, from W A S B. So, that is why we're renaming this school-sponsored student publications and we just incorporated, once that those materials are developed, how then it could be sold. Go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, so, W A S B does a lot of, you know, a lot of great, important, important work, advocacy for, you know, public school districts, very, very important. I get the sense here when I look at what is added and what is subtracted here, that we're maybe, there might be some kind of a shift towards a more authoritarian model of supervision of these things. If, if I'm wrong, tell me. Obviously, I understand that there are certain red lines that a school paper can't do, but this is one of the, it, it just seems like there's a whole lot of this adult can pull it, this adult can pull it, this adult can pull it and not a lot of counterbalance about freedom of speech, which I understand doesn't work exactly the same in a school paper, yet it still exists.
So, if I can just respond to that, Andrew, I, I would say that this is not creating anything that isn't already in district policy, it's just putting that in the topic of student media. Our policy is already on student speech, already on student dress code, already address all of these things are not, that are not permitted in our schools. It uses the same standard of material and substantial disruption. If you look at B, section three B, school-sponsored publication content, this is where it very explicitly says what is not allowed and what can be pulled. And then section C provides for the role of the student media advisor as far as what, when that information or that language is included in that student media and in the appeal process. The First Amendment very clearly lays out what can be included in a student newspaper, a student yearbook, other student publications. They are not an open forum, they are a limited forum because it is a school district sponsored materials. So, the same rules of an open forum do not apply to a school district sponsored material.
That's, that's fair, but I still, I guess I don't want us to necessarily be needing to take, I don't see us needing to take the most, the most authoritarian approach here. Now, if you're saying that truly nothing in here is different than what already exists in other places, I can do some more looking at that between, between this weekend and next week, I guess, but I, when I look at three B, you know, I see a start of, we don't, it's not the intent to restrict controversial topic, unpopular viewpoint, maybe disagreeable to some, but that's pretty, that's pretty soft. It's not our intent to do these and then just laundry list of what is automatically not okay and an appeal process that is really just, the clock's going to run out before you can really use it, so.
So, I would just ask, let, let's just go through then, since we're here, B two and let me know what of B two and three I should strike going back. So, A says content that violates district policy, rules related to harassment, intimidation, bullying, discrimination, including con-
This isn't, I'm, I'm not really talking about striking anything out of, out of B two, which is quite obvious. I'm, I'm a little worried about maybe some of the interpretations in three and the appeal process seems like it's an appeal process that is just very easy for the clock to run out on and there be no recourse. That the request that the school principal become involved if time permits and, and otherwise what? Otherwise, it looks like, it looks like the clock can just be run out. So, the, there's nothing wrong with the two B, you know, copyright and violence and stuff like that. I get, no plagiarism, sure.
The time, I'm, I'm sorry, Andrew, keep going.
So, I just, again, I, I'm, if, if this is all, if this is all cut and pasted from other, other places, then maybe we had a tighter, a little bit tighter policy than, than I thought we did because it was in all these other places. I just, I, I realize it's a, maybe a subtle and symbolic point that I'm talking about here, but those mean things sometimes.
All right, so I just want to look at three then. So, A says inconsistent with the purpose of the particular publication or activity. B, inconsistent with the educational goals and objectives of the publication. C, unduly invasive of a person's privacy, even if not clear violation of a specific law. D, likely to cause material and substantial disruption to school observations or the learning environment. E, in conflict with other board policies or F, otherwise inappropriate for the educational and school context in which it originates. So, if anyone has any ideas as to how to change paragraph three for the next board meeting when we bring this back, I, I believe this addresses the goals and is consistent with the First Amendment, but if, again, these are your policies, so if you have other suggestions, I'll need those for the next board meeting. Okay. Okay, all right, oh, I think Brian has some clip, Brian.
Andrew, I agree with you and I, I don't know a solution to it, though. Looking specifically at the appeal process of that, yeah, what if they just wait off time on it and, and then that issue's gone by?
I think you should at least, answering your question, I think you should at least have, at a, at a minimum, I think the students should be guaranteed and to at least the principal to override the advisor if, if there's an impasse, I mean, at a minimum, where right now the principal wouldn't have to hear it. I think our principals would always hear it. But the policy isn't about what, what I think our current, since I'm very confident our current principals would handle it, right? It's, and I think, I'll, I'll have some ideas, I'll have a couple ideas for next time. I think, I think you could maybe overinterpret inconsistent with the purpose of the publication could, could be maybe taken too far if someone was.
Is the, the time permitted part, is that when, I mean, I can imagine a scenario where a principal has to make it, or an advisor has to make a decision, a decision quite quickly. I'm thinking of yearbook, my days in high school, I was a yearbook editor and there's very, very tight timelines with, with yearbooks. And if a student doesn't make an appeal until the last minute and you are, it's in the contract, which are, what are your deadlines and when the pages need to be submitted? That would be my concern for the timeline. Okay, go ahead.
I agree, having been a high school teacher and having been in this line of work and still in this line of work, publishing things, editing things, meeting deadlines, but working with adults instead of students, it's the same thing. That's what time means. When the publication deadline comes, it, it has to go. Someone has to call it and make the decision. And so, I think you get it as sensitive and fair as you can do and then the adult has to make the decision and say, I'm sorry, we had to go to print and I think this is, I think this is just fine.
Any other comments? All right, we can move on. So, just so I'm clear, I'm not making any changes. If the board wants changes, we'll do that at next week's meeting.
And just as clarification, I know we have the cycle that goes through with policy, but if something bubbles up, we have the ability to ask you to change it if we can find a solution in two months and bring it back forth, you know, back to the board for a change at that point as well, so, correct?
Yep, that's why we brought one thirty-three back. Okay, three seventy-three, student social events. This was last revised in two thousand and five. Since then, student social events have changed a little bit. Not that I'm dating myself, but they have, and so, we've just made changes to reflect the current atmosphere and how things are organized in our schools. Okay, no questions? Moving to three seventy-five, student contests. This again was last revised in two thousand and five. We renamed this to student contests sponsored by outside agencies because that is what this policy addresses. So, those agencies that, you know, the free throw shooting contest or the geography B spelling contest, those that are not a, a school-sponsored but that are nice for our kids to do, what are the parameters around those, those contests? Okay, three eighty-one, we renamed three eighty-one from dealing with controversial issues to teaching about controversial issues. This was last revised in two thousand and five as well.
Melissa.
Go ahead, James.
Um, is three eighty-one, the additions, there is significant redlining in that policy. Was that based on the W A S B model?
It was based on the W A S B model as well as I'm, I have the ability within board docs to do a meta-search of all policies throughout the United States on that I can search key terms, those sorts of things. So, I didn't just rely on the W A S B model, I did a search for other samples to make sure that we were doing best practices with respect to this topic.
Thank you, it was a significant change in, yeah, I'm glad that it's aligned.
I guess th- this would be another one where I'm not, I, I don't know enough about the W A S B model policies or for that matter with what the, the rest of the country is doing to know if that's exactly what I want to align with or not. I understand there wasn't much here at all prior, so I, I get that. But I don't, if I'm a new teacher and I'm looking at this and, you know, there's a lot of, you know, controversy all, all the time in today's world, I, I don't know if this, I don't know what seeing three pages of policy, what is that, what is that telling me? Is it, is it, there's, there's just a lot here. Could you tell me what it changes in the, what are we doing here with the day-to-day? what are we doing here with the day to day of how this might be addressed now that's different?
Yes. So first, I just wanna, um, thank the GBA as well for reviewing all these policies. They reviewed this and they thought that this was better clarity and transparency for our teachers, especially when, um, we are getting concerns as, you know, in a, a very politicized environment we're in right now. We're getting concerns from the public that teachers are improperly teaching about issues. This policy lays forward what is a controversial issue, the role of the teacher, when families need to be advised. And then, um, there are certain issues that we do have to teach about and how those are correctly taught about and without, uh, the adult in the room projecting their personal beliefs and providing that clarity to that teacher and how to teach about those issues within the curriculum.
This policy seems to protect the children and the teacher, like.
That was the feedback I received.
Yeah, like it, it's, it's, um, good for both entities. Go ahead then.
So I just wanna make sure I understand. So this language has been approved by GBEA.
I don't wanna use the word approved. They've reviewed it. They gave me feedback. I've incorporated feedback I got from all stakeholders, including teaching and learning, school leadership, uh, technology. And, um, and that is what you see in front of you tonight. This isn't just what I drafted. It's with input of stakeholders.
Thank you. Anybody else? James?
Uh, yeah, I just wanna follow because I spent a lot of time on this one because it is, I think, a significant, um, concern of mine. And in reading it, I was just left with the impression that I was ill-equipped to make decisions on what is proper or not. That's why I appreciate it having been aligned with national searches and WASB, um, guidance and, and modeling because I, I could not have imagined writing a coherent cogent policy to protect us from this.
All right. I think we can move on.
Okay, so the rule, um, three eighty-one was then updated to reflect the changes in the policy. Moving on to three eighty-two point one, um, this is a new policy regarding recording of school meetings by non-district participants. Um, we already have policy three sixty-three point two, rules one and two, that prohibits students and staff from recording either through audio or visual meetings unless they get everyone's, um, agreement to record that. It may be a little confusing. Wisconsin is a one-party consent state. But under your school board authority, as well as under FERPA, the student confidentiality law and the Wisconsin confidentiality law for student records, you as a board have the authority to put parameters around when school meetings can be recorded. And so this policy is consistent with national, um, recommendations regarding recording of those meetings from the National School Board Association, COSA, Council of School Attorneys, the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, as well as, um, WASB and other national policies that address this topic.
Questions?
And so I, I think I need to understand, and maybe I'll have some suggestions for edits, um, and maybe work offline with you, Melissa. My primary concern is, I think the definition of meeting is vague, right? Because I absolutely agree with you. If there are multiple people and multiple students involved, the prohibition around, um, recording, oh, I think is absolutely valid, right? Because other people, but if it's a parent, a child, a administrator and potentially an SRO, and it's an impromptu or, you know, called on the same day meeting and it is a parent and that child, I, I think the constraints are different. Um, and, and the definition of meeting maybe needs to be clarified because I, I think it may service both parties that there is, um, evidence that come out of certain types of meetings between administrators and parents and, um, their children.
I, I'm glad you raised that, James, because the, the policy doesn't prohibit entirely. There's a process and a procedure and exam, um, exemptions if the request isn't made in time. I probably get two to three calls a week from our administrators saying, I have someone here for a meeting. They wanna record this meeting, but should I do? And I would say nine times out of ten, I say if they're gonna record, then just you record. Because as you know, um, you can do so many things now with a recording that it would not be accurate of that meeting. So I just wanna make sure that we have, uh, the same recording as well if we ever need to verify accuracy. In some circumstances where the family has indicated they're going to bring litigation or there is already some sort of action that is underway, um, then that would be a, a circumstance where I would not allow for that recording because that would not be in the district's best interest. So I, I'm happy to have that discussion with you.
Yeah.
You can address this, but I just, I wanted to make sure that you understood and I think you do, that this doesn't prohibit all recordings, just in those limited circumstances.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that because I got caught up on the two-day notice period, right? Because in certain circumstances and scenarios, that's too long. Right? Um, and so if we want a policy to be, you know, global, um, e- even if it is that we have to, in certain circumstances, you get authorization from, you know, district legal counsel or whatever, what, you know, just build that into policy.
Okay. Thank you. I'll, if you wanna connect with me before next week, that would be great.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Oh, Andrew?
Um, I'll, I'll connect with you offline on this as well. I, I guess what, without getting into, uh, a lot of detail, right? We don't have, you know, arrest authority or anything. So I, I don't wanna create a false, I don't wanna create a false sense of security for someone that if, you know, so, if someone's gonna do what they think they gotta do, probably they're going to do it or not do it without reading policy. Whoa, policy, oh, oh, you know, crap, it's tomorrow. I'd miss, missed the boat. I guess I'm not gonna do it, right? So, but I'll, I'll connect with that and I'm, as we go, I'm making a list of ones that are likely to have discussion or split votes. So maybe they, and I'll email them that if that's of help in reordering. Thank you.
Okay, four twelve. This was last revised in two thousand and eight. This is regarding our legal obligation to have a school census or school count. So just updated.
Um, I know this is gonna sound really odd, but, um, in four of these, starting with this one, um, I found, um, typos that really kind of made it nonsensical, a certain sentence or some, and then I checked, I'd found it in the redline, then I checked in the final version and it was still there. So is that something I should just talk, I should just send you an email about those? We don't have to go through all of those, right?
Please email me. Um, I will take full responsibility. Heather normally does these and she has been swamped with many other things. So I did these and I am not as thorough as Heather. So if you found typos, please let me know and I'll make those changes.
And then if, if I can just follow up, then I don't have to interrupt later. Um, and I actually found unbelievably in two of these that someone had written a note, like, so does this mean that? And it stayed in. I will email you about those two also, okay?
I did find one of those today. Okay. So other than my typos, which I apologize, four twelve point one is the policy on full-time students. Uh, this was last revised in two thousand and eight. Um, our policy currently is not clear as to what constitutes a full-time student and this matters for purposes of WIAA and student participation when it comes to high school. Policy four twenty, school admissions, these just very minor changes. This was last updated in twenty eighteen. Policy, I'm sorry, rule four twenty-one is procedures for placing transfer students. Again, very minor revisions here. Rule two is, um, considerations for enrollment requests for students expelled from other public schools. This was last updated in twenty sixteen and we just made revisions that reflect our practice. Our practice has evolved over the years and so we, um, updated it to reflect that. All right. Policy four twenty-one, entrance age. Um, this was updated in twenty nineteen and we made minimal revisions with respect to this policy. Rule four twenty-one is procedures for early admission to four K, five K, first grade and exemption from five-year-old kindergarten. This was updated in twenty nineteen and minimal revisions. Policy, um, four twenty-two, which is admission of non-resident students other than public school open enrollment. Again, last revised in twenty nineteen and minimal changes there. Policy four twenty-two point one is our policy on admission of exchange students. Um, I won't bore you with all the details, but there's two different types of visas that students can come to the United States um, to enter our schools. One is the J one, which is considered your typical foreign exchange student in an F one visa. That's the visa where the family pays tuition and that would be a non-public school student. This policy only applies to J one visas, so we just made that clear. Four twenty-two point one then provides, um, the process for students under the J one visas. I'm gonna group four twenty-three, four twenty-four together in the rules. These are the, um, participation of non-public school students in district courses and programs as well as our open enrollment, um, policies. These we bring quite often to you because the law changes very frequently on these, um, programs. So they were last revised recently and so we just have minimal changes to these.
So these are students that may be homeschooled but want to take or participate in?
That's policy four twenty-three, correct. And then four twenty-four is open enrolled.
Okay.
And then four twenty-five is part-time public school open enrollment. This as well has been brought several times as legislation changes with respect to the part-time open enrollment. All right. Policy four thirty-two, school attendance areas. Um, I, working with the stakeholders, we did make some pretty significant changes on this policy. The original policy was very short. Um, as we've worked through the, uh, reorganization and closure of schools, um, I think it's been clear that revised to include some periodic, uh, reviews by the board with respect to student attendance, school attendance areas. And then as well as what would be those factors that you consider with respect to school attendance areas. The previous policy was, um, silent on those factors. So those factors have been added. Again, this is just based on our research. Um, as administrators, you can alter this as you want, but just to get a starting point for that discussion. Brian?
We would still continue, and I'm interpreting this, that we would still continue to allow open enrollment within the district or intra-district. I'm, the phrasing I'm getting thrown off on, but that we would still allow students to attend other schools within our district, depending board, you know, our normal procedures that we've had. That's the word I was looking for, see. Good seat there. Intra-district transfer.
Yes, that's a separate policy and rule. Now we are up to four thirty-four point one, release time for religious instruction. So this addressed those concerns that, um, you had brought forward, um, previously, Brian, which provides further clarification on that release time consistent with the law. The law requires schools to provide release time for religious instruction.
Melissa, have a question. Is it, is it reasonable to ask for a definition of instruction? I was just, when I was reviewing this policy, um, I, I just came to terms with, I didn't know the scope of it. Um, and if a church was having a outing and if just because it was related or affiliated with a religious organization, that was a get out of, you know, get out of school event, right? Uh, so I was left, you know, kind of isolated with, I don't know what instruction meant.
So some of the policies did have definition, James, and working again to be culturally responsive, I left those out because I, I don't, I'm not familiar with every religion as to what instruction in every religion is. And so my, you know, my bias is I was raised Catholic and that was my typical CCD classes on Wednesday nights where you were handed a book and taught as you were in a classroom. I, I don't wanna incorporate that bias in this policy as to what is religious instruction for a religion that I'm unfamiliar with.
Yeah, I don't know. Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll think, uh, through it. I, I'm just concerned that I don't, you know, I don't know that that there are any constraints on this at all, um, given, uh, lacking that definition. Um, or it'll be interpreted so, um, concretely that there'll, there'll be a very, very conservative approach. I, I'm, yeah, I'll, I'll take it off and I'll think more about it. I appreciate your position that we don't want to be insensitive. Oh, I just, I would love to land on a place where we can be at least declarative and, oh, as precise as possible.
If it matters, um, section two A one says that the parent needs to provide the written permission, um, giving you the day, time, week, location of the instruction and proof of enrollment in the instruction. So I, you know, again.
Andrew?
Um, is there a reason that it's, it has a, a floor and a ceiling? It's at least sixty minutes and not more than one eighty?
Right.
That's what's in the law.
Really? It's very specific.
Oh, okay. Um, all right.
We move.
Okay. So we're recommending to then repeal the rule to incorporate that language into the policy. Um, policy four forty is student rights and responsibilities. There is substantial revisions in this policy as well. The existing policy is very, very short. Um, getting to Andrew's concern over rights and freedoms that students have, this policy clearly sets forth within the United States Constitution as well as the law and the US Supreme Court decisions with respect to students' rights and responsibilities for expression, education, and their due process rights and other rights and responsibilities.
Andrew?
Okay, so. Again, here, here's one where I think, and maybe more, maybe more clearly than the other cases. It, it seems to have, uh, not that anything in this policy is, is wrong, but it seems like there is a shift of focus. Uh, and I think that needs to be acknowledged if we're gonna pass this, that there's, it appears that if you just look at the, the black letter, it looks like there was, uh, it's policy about some things that you can't do with much of the wording being about what you can do. And it looks like now, if you look at paragraph, paragraph A, it's moved from, it's just put in a, a lot of the responsibilities piece. Like the, the responsibilities piece dwarfs the rights piece in this paragraph. And again, I don't think there's anything wrong with respecting the rights of others. Exercising, must exercise a high degree of self-discipline. I guess is a little strongly worded maybe. It's, it's subtle, but I think it's there and I think it's important and I think it does, I think there's a shift here in the wording. If I'm, if I'm the only one who thinks this, I'll shut up. Or tonight I'll shut up.
All right, Brian?
On four forty, and I hope I'm on the right page with this, um, under due right, uh, rights to due process law, it says, uh, section three, physical forced restraint may be used by school personnel a breach of discipline or to stop a continuing breach of discipline. Could you define what a breach of discipline? Could you define what a breach of discipline would be?
I'm looking at it. I think that points out a good question, Brian. I will go back and compare that to our seclusion and restraint policy. Yes.
So my other question with that, and often, not often, but students that have IEPs or receive special education services may have written in their IEP, "use of nonviolent crisis intervention in crisis areas" and stuff like that, that there's going to be some times where students are restrained. And that's not necessarily a breach of discipline on there, so I'm just looking for clarification on that part.
I will go back and clarify. Anybody else? All right. Okay. Thank you for sticking with me. 443.2, student conduct on school buses in the rule. Minor revisions to reflect updating formatting and current practice. Policy 450... No questions? Okay. Policy 454 is the child abuse and neglect reporting. There are some changes here because the DPI this year came out with changes to the training module for mandatory reporting, which was met with a lot of controversy by Wisconsin school attorneys. And they have since gone back and revised that training based on our feedback. So this policy reflects changes to that training as well as where there might be some gray area in the DPI's training to what the district is requiring as our policy. All right. 455.2, student automobile use, last revised in 2008. Changes made to reflect the addition of students driving cars in our schools and what that looks like for our high schools. Policy 455 in rule, recommending to repeal the rule and incorporate the language into the policy regarding eye protection.
Just a small... I'm just curious, is there something like legally that where, I mean, there's other, like, ear protection and stuff? I'm just wondering why it doesn't all go together or is there just a statute that's specifically eye protection? So we do that?
There is a statute on eye protection. I don't know why the board wanted a policy on eye protection, so I'm just making those revisions and bringing them back.
This is on eye protection one. This is going back to 455.2 with student automobile use. Have we run into issues with students not locking their cars other than theft of, like, have things been planted on students' cars by other students or anything like that? Or is this just a lock your door so people don't steal stuff? That's included in the policy? I'm looking at B3. All vehicles parked on school property shall be locked. The district assumes no liability. So is this really just a liability issue with it?
I'm not aware of any planting. I am aware of theft.
And by no means am I implying that students, you know, staff would go out and plant anything or anything like that, but if a student was dropping something that they shouldn't have on school property and they realize this door was unlocked type of thing, but the theft issue is much better for humanity on here, so I'll trust that.
We get claims from parents asking for the district to reimburse a number of different items when things are stolen that have not been secured in locked lockers or cars or... So this is, again, to make clear that we assume no responsibility. Okay. Policy 460, with respect to student awards and scholarships. There have been some changes in the law with respect to Wisconsin Academic Excellence Scholarship and the Technical Excellence Scholarship, so we just incorporated that language as well. And then those rules, Rule 1 and Rule 2, were then updated to reflect those changes. Right. Policy 491 is our rights and responsibilities of divorced, separated parents, guardians, and parents, guardians not sharing the same household. If there's one policy that gets cited to the most in my office, it's this policy. So I worked with Heather and the Directors of Education who deal with our parents and guardians who have concerns about each other to make these updates to reflect the most hot topics that we deal with as well as to provide further clarity to our parents. And then finally, student photographs. This was last updated in 2008. Lots of changes have happened in the photography industry since then, so we updated this policy to reflect what's going on in our schools with respect to student photography. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but since we're on the last one, I just want to say thank you for all your work and whoever helped you with this. Thank you so much.
It's tedious to have to go through these, but we really need them. Like, we really, they have to be right and they have to work and they have to follow the law. And we're never going to get away from this part. It's always going to be front and center. So yes, thank you. Does anyone have anything else to say about these? I mean, we'll be voting on them on Monday, so I'm... Yeah, yeah. Be ready to come and vote a lot on Monday, so... Okay. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're adjourned.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education Meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org, for more information on the district and future meeting dates. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.